Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and start our meeting this evening. And Craig Christa, City Minister, will lead us in pledge of indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to its broad under which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we just pray to ask that you fill this room this evening. Provide us with your wisdom. Provide us with the ability to make sound decisions, Lord. We just thank you for the opportunity and the blessing to do the city's business. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Before I come up for a motion to approve the agenda, I would like to introduce our new CFO, Brooke Carroll. Say hello, Brooke. So now we've got a she-Brick and a he-Brick that work for us. So I might just refer to her as BC and him as BD. But we're really excited to have you on staff and look forward to your work and contributing to things as we move forward. So thank you for being here. And I really appreciate that. And I apologize for not introducing you last meeting. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Have the motion approved the agenda?
I'll resume the motion. Krista seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to take a few minutes just to say a few things about the budgeting process that we're working on. We sent into the county a cap of 10 mils. I don't think our intention probably will be to end up at a 10 mil increase. But in order to facilitate a discussion and to set the budget for next year and focus on some of the priorities that we've talked about this year, we thought that was a good starting point. So the nice thing about having 10 on that sheet that's been sent out is if you move the decimal point over one place, that'll tell you what a 1 mil increase will be. So just consider that as we're going through this process of discussing. But one of the things that I wanted to talk about is priorities. And part of this budget process that we're going through, and what we're starting to do tonight, is setting the priorities in the budget. As the council, it's our responsibility to review the departments' requests and the budgets to ensure that the requests that are being made fit our priorities. Many times in organizations, departments make priorities and make requests, and they're competing for the same amount of funding. And the choices that we make in terms of how we view those competing priorities really is something that, as a council, we should have some responsibility of oversight for. I kind of made this akin to when I was growing up in Manhattan, the basketball team and the football team every year got new uniforms. And you know, we had the best equipment. I mean, when Ry Dallas making air helmets, we had the latest and greatest. The guys on the wrestling team and the track team, they were running and wrestling in singlets and things that were six or seven years old. The team didn't even match when they went out in the hat. And so there's that tension in a group and an organization of funding and priorities. And part of what we're trying to do this year is look at some things where we haven't spent money in the past. And I just really kind of referred to this year, 2025, as kind of the year of reset. We're going to reset the priorities as we see necessary in order to fulfill the commitments that we made to do street repairs. One, we've got a responsibility to, and we made a commitment when we met in January, to increase the street repair fund balance for repairs by 770,000. With the 250 that we just used for maintenance from year to year, we're talking about a million dollars in those two days when we talk. And thus, the million dollars, five-year million dollars for street repair kind of evolved from staff. And consequently then, a 10 mil increase is a 770,000 dollars that we're looking for for street repair. Now, there's a lot of things in this budget that we maybe need to take a look at and reduce the 10 mils. There's additional staff that's presented at the 10 mil levy level, capital expenditures for vehicles, cash for reserves. There's money for contingencies. And I think we'll have a chance to discuss some of these things, and we can reduce the mil levy at this point, say to six. The county at this point is looking at doing a 3.7 mil increase. Decrease, I mean, yeah, decrease. And if we can appropriate that decrease into our mil levy and end up with a net increase over where we were last year, if we went at six, the net increase would be 2.3%. So a $150,000 house for a 10 mil increase would be $220, that'd be about $50 for the year. And so we're in the situation we're in where we're experiencing this growth. There's revenue that's flowing into the budget based on the increased value of the mil levy from 66,000 last year. Our mil levy next year will be 77,000. And for the 29 mils that we're currently receiving, that's about an additional $300,000. There's an additional, last year, 2023, the net budget from our base operations, we netted about 300,000. Three plus three is six. That's $600,000, give or take how we end up the year, that we have available to us. In addition to that, there's interest revenue from the funds that we have invested in. And that money gets transferred, I believe at the end of the year, in the capital, undisputed capital account. So there's some additional money there. So there's the base increase in the budget. When I looked at it the other day, we were talking about it. That might have changed some of the numbers. But we're looking at increasing the budget by about a million, 100,000 dollars. So the 77, if we can't get to 77,000, 770,000 with a 10 mil increase, maybe we can make some adjustments in some of those other items and come up with, if it's a 6 mil increase with a 2.3 net, and we've made some adjustments in the other items, and I've talked to some detractors who really don't want to see us raise the mil levy at all. But in the growth path that we're in and the things that we need to do to keep the city going, it's really, I think, important that we get this reset of the budget and priorities this year. And then if we make an adjustment in the recommendations for staffing, we can pick those items. The number of people I broke it at in four. So if we went to two and picked up some additional revenue there next year, we'll just look to do that next year. So we're not asking about, we're not trying to cut anything, but we're talking about a delay, resetting, making sure our base priorities are right. So next year, next year in 2026, we can walk. And after we get the walking figured out in 2027, then we're going to run. And we can move because we'll have the priorities on the base of things that we're working on set and the things that we look at in terms of water, parks, all these different things, the capital plan that we're working on. All those things will be set out. We'll have the detail and the finances to get it done. And everybody will know the direction that we're heading. Now, one of the things on one of the pages in the budget, when it talks about the mil levy increase, our intent, I mean, the way the money, Matt has had the money flow into the account for street repairs, it kind of creates maybe the impression that after this next year, that we're going to be moving these funds out of street repairs and we're going to put them, you know, in the airplane that I want or, you know, Krista's new shop or whatever we're going to set money at. We're committing for the next five years to spend $800,000 or 700, I like to round that numbers, but $800,000 a year on street repair. It takes about, the full-depth reconstruction, what we've had to do this last year and what we've learned from this, is it's about a million dollars a mile. So if we spend 800,000 for five years, that's a million dollars. Wow. That's basically four miles of road. But I've kind of made this joke a couple other times. We can either fix these streets where they're deteriorated down to the base, or we can just grind them up and take them and put them back to ground. And there's some towns that have done that. I'm not going to mention their names, because they own and sold in other communities. But I don't think that's what we want to do. I think the fact that we're in this unique position, we're probably one of a dozen communities in Kansas that is experiencing growth. Most communities are experiencing a decline in revenue, a decline in population. They're trying to figure out how to consolidate schools, how to consolidate police departments, how to consolidate even county governments, pulling counties together. So this is a process. We've got a couple more weeks before we actually approve the budget. But when Matt makes his presentation, we'll have an opportunity to discuss these things. And we'll continue in the next couple meetings to get it worked out. And we'll move forward. So just want to be sure for those detractors, we have not passed the budget yet. We've not committed to 10 mils yet. And we will continue to listen to the community. I just want to say this, and I'm going to keep saying this. We are making every effort to do the right things and to do it the right way. And that can be hard. Because some of the things we're looking at and decisions that we're making, they're not easy decisions. But as long as we're making that effort, as long as we're all focused up here, on the table over there, and even as a community, if we agree that we're going to do the right things and we're going to do them the right way, then that'll make the harder decisions easier. We could have just paved over Second Street after they pulled off the two inches and not spent the money. And five years from now, that street would have been cracking up again. And we'd be going, what's wrong with these guys? They just fixed this seven years ago or five years ago. Well, the reason would be because we didn't fix it right. So it's really important, I think, that if we agree to that as part of this reset, that we're going to do things the right way and we're going to do the right things, in the long run, God would be better for it. And people will look back at the process that we're working at, looking at water and what we're doing in terms of planning out our growth for the next 10 years. People, 50 years from now, will look back and be thankful that we took the time, had the foresight, and had the vision to do things the right way. So as we go forward, just keep those things in mind. Okay, we've approved the agenda, right? All right, we're rolling along here. We're next to citizens' comments. Anyone want to come forward to us three minutes? Write your name and let us know who you are. And we are here to listen.
Hello, City Council. I'm Mayam Lee. My address is 528 Morse Bruce here in Goddard. And I timed myself. I have two minutes, or two minutes and 57, so I'll read fast.
Take your time, you have three.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm the City Council in the city. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I come before to discuss a matter that is fundamental to our community's trust in this council and at its transparency. While we all value the importance of making informed decisions that impact our city, I believe the current approach to disseminating information during council meetings is falling short in several critical ways. First, the complexity of the information presented is often overwhelming. While I understand that governance is intricate, the way this information is communicated to the public is neither simple nor accessible. Many of us in the community struggle to grasp the implications of the issues discussed until they are already being put to a vote. By the point that, by that point, it's often too late for meaningful community input. The lack of clarity is not, not only alienates the public, but it also breeds confusion and ultimately mistrust. To address this, I propose that the council consider establishing a forum or a series of public announcements where upcoming issues are presented in a clear and straightforward manner. These could be accompanied by surveys to gather community feedback before decisions are made. This proactive approach would allow residents to engage more fully with the process, ensuring that the decisions here truly reflect the will and best interest of the community. I also want to acknowledge our responsibility as citizens. We must stay informed, attend meetings, review agendas, and participate in public hearings. It's a two-way street, and for this system to work, I believe that we must educate ourselves and be proactive in asking questions. However, the shared responsibility is undermined when the council itself sometimes struggles to fully comprehend the information provided by its own staff. I would like to briefly touch on a recent example in Wichita, where the city's council, lack of understanding regarding reports, led to significant confusion about the parking issues. This case highlights the importance of ensuring that both the council and the community both have a clear and accurate understanding of the topics at hand. When this does not happen, it results in misguided decisions that can have lasting negative impacts. In conclusion, transparency is not just about making information available, it's about making it understandable and accessible. I urge this council to take steps to improve how information is communicated and to actively seek community input before decisions are finalized. Let's work together, all of us, to ensure that our city's governance is truly by the people, for the people. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Anybody else? Next round.
Mine won't be as well-spoken as hers. Josh Blanding, 401 Richard Road. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for having us up here today. I would like to discuss, I actually like what you said earlier, Mayor, about the priorities and needs. I would like to throw out there, based on several recommendations of community members, the priorities. Being the park, the new park that we won established. I understand that phase one is roughly $3 million. Priorities versus needs. I would like to make the suggestion, I believe we should table that at the moment. I really don't believe our city needs another park. When we're talking about mil levies, we're talking about the water rate increases. That's something that I think can easily be tabled. And then obviously, we can revisit that a year from now or five years from now. But in the meantime, I mean, we have the splash pad and everything. I think we're doing good. So the park, when you talk about the priorities and needs, I think the park should be tabled. The second thing I would like to speak on is the new hauler for solid waste and recycling. So right now, I'm kind of against getting one unified solid waste treatment. The reason being is you take the competition out of it. And the competition, I would like to say, for instance, my bill is about, comes out to about $18 a month. Now, that's really good compared to some other people that are getting right now, right? And that's through Waste Connections. There's actually Air Capital, there's someone that's actually beating me on rates. And I was like, oh, I'm going to call Air Capital, right? However, if we go down, I know if my bill has gone up, and I'm sure everyone here has done it, you've always had to call in and say, hey, you know, Joe's bill is only 18 bucks. How come I'm getting 20 bucks? And they have always price match, or typically they will price match. I fear that if we don't have something, if we go to a single unit and if it's not in contract, in a binding contract, then what happens when they raise those rates? And then people like me, who I just have trash, I don't have recycle. So if you make me trash and recycle, in theory, my bill will double now compared to what it is now. Once again, I have a family of seven. All right, my kids, especially my older teenage boys, they can eat me out of house and home. So anything that will save me six bucks a month still means a lot to me and the rest of the citizens. So I would just like to throw that out there for us to also take that into consideration. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Did you say seven kids?
No, five kids. Family of seven.
My wife and I and my kids.
I've been done it too.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Josh stole my thunder. I am not a huge fan of, I have a J6, a single hauler. And for the same reason, when you take away competition, they have no reason to do good. There are many examples in this town where there's one of something and people around here are like, you know they don't care. Because if you want a certain product in town, you have to go to them because they're the only one until somebody else comes along. And I think taking away that competition is not good. A lot of the reasons that were given in the agenda notes about reducing traffic and all that, I just don't see where that's going to have a way. I'm with Josh. My bill sits at $12 a month. Because where we live, we have a contract with a particular carrier. And if everybody has it, then it's 12 bucks. Now, right here, you get 12 bucks for everybody, I'll change my book. But that's what I'm saying, you know. And I noticed on the community events page that people were, you know, some people are paying $200 a month for, or their bill is 200. Or probably a quarter. I'm looking at that going, huh, I'm paying 36. Yeah. So not a huge fan, just wanted to let you know.
Did you lose a bet?
Ooh, Jeffrey.
Did you lose a bet?
Don't be bashful, my pal.
You're on deck.
Oh, yes, did you want to?
Go ahead, you go right ahead. You're, you're.
Well, I'm very cool to you. I just, because I think. Okay, my lord, I'm going to break it. I come to you this evening bolstered by my friends Josh and Jeffrey. And this is Jody. See how we're all getting up on you? Because I have some historical experience with single hauler, trash disposal. Because in Colorado, in our lovely neighborhood, we went to that. And all was peachy keen, bed, whining roses at first. And then things started happening. Trash started not getting picked up. This one of their trucks broke. They started making, they raised the rate anyway. Cost of living, don't you know? As far as I know, maybe they went through the council, maybe they didn't, we just got to notice that our rate was going up. So, I, and heaven knows, I live on a gravel road and I press it every day. But I would rather have that gravel road and press it, press it every day than have to get in there with a single hauler, who may or may not, just me.
Thank you.
Well, she can follow that.
Sorry, Russ.
Quiet, Cowboys fan.
Jeffrey, just so you know, he's a Raiders fan, if you wanna get on, the only one.
Better Cowboys.
So, Council, you get the job of being the gatekeeper of all things that are good, bad, or indifferent. People don't like the water bills, they don't like what you're doing on the streets, or they love the park, or they hate the park. It lies with you. Fair or unfair, that's, you guys get the bulk of the city. Congratulations, stay with it, I want you to stay in your positions and keep fighting hard. You have a powerful administrative team that's fully engaged with what we're doing here in our process. They also have, we have our frontline staff, team members, I see them all the time, they're fully engaged. But they can't fully be successful unless what you're doing is fully successful. Like our last meeting we had, my statement was fire ready, aim, that type of stuff, those hurt, they hurt us all. What I'm asking of you is to change your perspective. Some of what I see in how you're managing council is based on what you've always done, and that's all we've ever known. I want you to stretch, I want you to do things differently. Allow me to clarify what I want you to bring to every single council meeting, every single decision that you make. I want you to explain to the public, you may talk about this in private or in closed-door sessions, but we as the public, we want to hear some of these things, and that's where the clarifications come from. The timing of this is perfect, we didn't coincide any of this, and there is no, no pre-meeting to talk about any of this. But how does a project or an expenditure align with our strategic plan? Do we have a one, three, five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan? Is it, if so, where is it? I know we don't have that yet, and fairness to administration, we have to do that. But the public needs to see it. How much does a given project cost? How are we measuring the ongoing taxation rate increases? In ways that we can understand it, and everyone, in layman's terms, and what that means to each and every household, each and every business. How is the measurement being, how are these measurements of taxation increases or decreases or what have you, or changes in taxes, how is that being communicated with taxpayers? How are taxpayers being engaged in the process, throughout the process, not after a decision's been made? Before the, as we're trying to build to a decision? We want to be part of that. How is a given project gonna be paid for? Who pays for it? Is it city, county, state, federal? Is there budget? Actual budget, not taking this budget to pay for that budget, and robbing Peter to pay Paul, that type of stuff? I want that transparency out there. I don't think you're not being transparent with that, but I don't think it's, it's clear to the public that where money's coming from all the time. Is this a, a given project, is it reoccurring? If so, where does that budget come from? This comes back to that five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan, if something's ongoing. Is there another way to pay for it? Have we, what have we, have we done an exhaustive search in order for some of these projects or a given project to be paid for? What happens if we don't do a given project today, tomorrow, or ever? I'd like to understand that. It may be a byline in a conversation, but I think public needs to understand, if we don't do something, what does that mean? By approving a project expense, what other projects may not be able to be done, to your point when you, when you opened council today, and some of your comments. We can't have it all at once. I think we can have it all over a long period of time, if you prioritize it in planning.
Please wrap up your comments.
What risks have you considered? And how will we mitigate those? And as a last comment, is there a project rail for all of our projects, and a rail that's a rolling actions items list, it's time-based, it's countable, and it's visible to everyone where we can follow along from the genesis of a given project or an initiative all the way through its conclusion? I have a long list, I only got to half of them, and I knew I would, you're welcome to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Anyone else? All right. Closed citizen comments, and move on to item F. I'd like to give the council a chance to declare a conflict or communication that they've had that might influence their ability to consider today's agenda items in partially in conflict. Seeing none, I don't think I am in conflicts either, so we'll move on to appointments and confirmations, recognitions, nominations. All right, you want me to do this, or you're gonna do this?
Public.
Appreciate the city administrator coming back here.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I did that lead up in high school, so it is very important. Yes, fourth place in five A state. Last council meeting, we had some conversation from the governing body requesting that staff formulate an ad hoc water committee to help unpack the challenges that our water utilities facing. Community gave an opportunity to connect with some of our concerned citizens and help drive that process and that decision-making. So, city staff put together a short list of individuals, we primarily polled from folks who actually came to our council meeting here a couple of weeks ago. And typically, the way appointments are made is that the mayor makes the appointments with the consent of the city council. And so, he did approve this list of individuals, some of which are here with us this evening. Each of these individuals have agreed to serve on the ad hoc water committee. My colleague, Assistant City Administrator Ryan Schrack, has been leading this process at a staff level. We've already worked to put together a tentative schedule for this group, we're gonna meet once a month for the next six months. We'll have some sort of a presentation activity along with some brainstorming sessions going into that. And at the end of the six months, we'll have the committee report back to the council. And so, at this time, we would just ask that the city council consider approving the mayor's appointments, seeing here on the screen, and that is all.
I make a motion to approve that, what I'm gonna do?
That's what we need, yes?
Just for application purposes, we do have two Jeff Joneses in our community, and one is Jeffrey, who comes to meetings, and the other is not Jeffrey. Are we talking about Jeffrey Jones?
This would be the Jeffrey Jones with which was present accounted for this evening.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify, because you give that Jeffrey.
Cool.
Nope, fair. Good question. Let's make sure we get the right.
I make a motion to approve the ad hoc water committee that the mayor has put together.
Krista makes a motion, keep in seconds, all is in favor.
Aye.
Next point.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'll take a crack at this one as well. So, the Goddard Public Library Board has recommended that the city council appoint Allison Patton to serve on the Goddard Public Library Board. We included the application material from Ms. Patton's advocacy to serve in this capacity. I do believe our library director, Carrie, is with us, is this Allison as well? Would you like to share anything with the governing body? If not, we'll allow them to make the appointment, but please feel free to speak if you'd like. Mayor, the recommendation here would just be to appoint Ms. Patton to serve on the library board.
I'll just say that probably the library board meetings are maybe not quite as intimidating as this, so I did have an opportunity years ago to serve on the library board as a treasurer, so I have a soft spot in my heart for the library. Thank you for being willing to serve in that capacity, and I'll entertain a motion. I'll just move that we approve Allison, I'll do that, I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
I'll be second, so all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just a piece of cake, you're in, thank you. Okay, next item is consent agenda. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review the items in there, the minutes and the payroll accounting. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm ready to motion, say, keep in seconds, all is in favor, say aye. Motion carries, no unfinished business, item J one, and we're ready for the one hundred and sixty-seventh development. Brett, are you up?
I believe so.
Clicker, mine is for the top.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, Brett Chauvin, with Stipe Public Finance, Wichita Financial Advisor to the city. This is item J one for the one hundred and sixty-seventh development authorization to self-differing notes, series twenty twenty-four dash four. Just some background on how we got here. On August fifth, twenty twenty-four, the city council accepted petitions and adopted resolutions authorizing the infrastructure projects related to the one hundred and sixty-seventh West Division Phase One Development. This is step one of this process, the city council's been through this process many times, with your ongoing housing developments, basically for infrastructure. The projects for this item consist of sanitary sewer, pump station, and forced main improvements for one billion two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Water main improvements for one billion one hundred and nine thousand dollars. For stormwater drain improvements, one million eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And then for a smaller part of the development, the sanitary sewer improvements, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Three improvements, seven hundred and ninety thousand, and water line improvements for five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. The total project construction costs, total of six million four hundred and thirty-five thousand, that's how much was included in petitions, with cost of issuance and capitalized interest that we used to make the interest payments on the notes during the construction. The principal amount of the notes is estimated at seven million three hundred and eighty thousand. The second step, we're on step two tonight, second step is to adopt the resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, series twenty twenty-four dash four, to provide interim finance to fund the construction of the project. With this approval, Stipe Public Finance, Financial Advisor, will prepare the preliminary official statement, which is the offering document on the notes. Will solicit a credit rating through S and P Global, and advertise the note sale to potential purchasers, banks, underwriters, and investors. As with your other notes, we anticipate to receive an S P one plus rating, which is the best rating you can get on temporary notes, basically because the notes have a pledge to issue bonds at the end of the project. So, the bonds will take off the notes. Step three will be to conduct the note sale and accept the best bid from the purchaser providing the lowest interest cost to the city. The note sale resolution before you tonight authorizes financial advisor to move forward with the sale of the temporary notes. The resolution schedules competitive bid sale for September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, which is a regularly scheduled meeting, opening bids at ten a.m. On that date, we'll open the bids and evaluate them for accuracy. We'll come to your meeting that night and explain the results of the sale, and have the, and recommend that the city council accept the best bid from the purchaser providing the lowest interest cost on the notes. And at that point, we'll have you consider adopting the note resolution as well. After the notes close, which is scheduled on October eighth, twenty twenty-four, proceeds will be used to construct projects. Once the projects are completed, the notes are near maturity, final cost will be calculated. One hundred percent of the cost will be assessed to the property owners within the development, with the exception of the one hundred and sixty-seventh West Water Main Improvements, which is the cost of the twelve-inch water pipe, I believe we're upgrading that from a ten-inch pipe to a twelve-inch pipe. And so, the improvement district is responsible for seventy-one point seven six percent, and the larger twenty-eight point two four percent.
And then, in this survey, for clarification, the reason for doing that is so that there's the ability then for additional development to be added to that line, and we'll recoup that twenty-eight percent from the next addition that gets added to it. So it's, it's, we're making an investment in the line for additional development, if it happens, so we don't have to go put a second line in. So it's just, this is where we're spending a little money, investing in that line, so that, and we'll recoup that when that line gets used to its full capacity of the larger lines. I know my wife was asking about, that we just, after talking about the budget, we just approved six million dollars of city money, and this whole process can be really confusing to somebody that just tunes in at the right time and goes, well, you know, you just spent seven million dollars or six million dollars, we really haven't. But this is that process of getting those costs eventually allocated to the individual properties.
Right, you're forward-looking, you know that there's gonna be hopefully more homes or residents hooked up to that line, you're forward-looking, and eventually that cost can be assessed on a future level. Property owners will have the opportunity to prepay any or all their assessment whenever the projects are completed, just like usual. Any amount not prepaid will be financed with G O. bonds. The temporary notes are set to mature in a little over three years, so probably in two and a half years, we'll be looking at G O. bonds. And the specials will be eventually collected via assessment taxes over twenty years if they don't prepay their assessment at that time. For financial, the cost of issuance for the notes will be paid for with no proceeds, and eventually specially assessed to the property owners of the improvement district when we sell the G O. bonds. The semi-annual interest payments will be paid in capitalized interest, so there's no out-of-pocket cost to the city to make those interest payments during construction, and those, that capitalized interest is included within the financing. Legally, the note sale resolution and supporting documents are authorized by Product Chain, authorizing resolutions twenty-four dash thirty through twenty-four dash thirty-five, with the special assessment statute K S A twelve dash six A O. one, et cetera. And those documents were drafted by your bond counsel, Kevin Cowan-Gilmoren Bell, who can be here tonight, and reviewed by myself and your city attorney, Ryan Pack. Your staff's recommendation to adopt the note sale resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, series twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash four, of the city of Goddard, Kansas, that's a voice vote. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, you gonna have any other questions?
Any questions? You entertain a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Brett makes a motion, I have a second. Krista seconds. Any just professionals, you guys are with a client like you, standing, all is in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We'll be back on September sixteenth to review results.
Okay, very good, thank you.
There you go.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is Jane T., this is lots of other resolution for special assess-
Hello, man. City council. This is Jane. This is a lot split resolution for special assessments. So I didn't put this together, so I'm just going to summarize it for you guys real quick. If you have any questions, feel free.
Sure.
Basically, it's a little complicated. So just bear with me. Like I said, ask questions at any time. Basically, when we go through petition process and you assess development, like you just saw, like we're going to borrow money, then we assess it through the special assessment process, we do bonding. What happens when we take a lot and we split it? And that's the question that comes up with by cloverleaf or any other development. If you're taking a duplex and you split it in half, or you're going to turn it into twin homes, or maybe you turn it into multiple different units that are going to be sold separately. One person here, one person here, one person here. What happens to the special assessments, you know, because typically one lot is going to be paying X number of dollars over 20 years. And so if you split it into two, is one person paying all of that and another person paying none of that? And so what we do is called a respread and that's what we're talking about here. This is a respread. And a respread just simply says you're going to take it and you're going to spread it through the development. So you started out with 100 lots, then you end up with 120, let's say. So now you have to respread the assessments to 120 lots. Typically, that's what we would do, except with this particular resolution, what we are telling the county is that if we're going to be splitting them from a duplex to a twin home right down the center, we're going to do it 50/50. So a lot that would be especially assessed, $100 would be paying $50 on one side and $50 on the other side. This is somewhat typical. Sometimes we do it by square footage. And so the county is used to seeing it being, if you have 75% of the square footage on one side, 25% on the other side, you're going to be paying 75% of the special assessments on one side and 25% on the other side based on the square footage of that split lot. And we want to do it by 50/50. This is something that we run into. We, we ran into a cloverleaf and this is something that's been coming up a lot. We've been getting phone calls from different cities, uh, from the county and different engineering firms. As lot splits become more prevalent, this process will help us work with the county to say 50/50 for these lot splits so that they don't have to do an internal calculation and that we don't have to come back before you guys with a resolution to do a respread every single time and pay for underwriting for the respread agreement. If that makes sense, please let me know. If it doesn't make sense, please also let me know and feel free to ask questions. Yes.
Got a question.
Yes.
So, um, basically, this is like the waterline.
Special assessment proceeds. Yes, waterline.
Concrete driveway, you know, because we do own the strip, right?
It'd be for any improvement that's petitioned. So anything like you just saw, that for, for J one.
So when you split it, I mean, you still have more cost. You still have the waterline, the beater. I mean, wouldn't it be more with the lot split than just the same as a single family home?
I'm not sure.
You're saying, you're saying a single family home and we're going to split it and this guy's going to pay that, this guy's going to pay that. But if we have two driveways, two meters, wouldn't it be more than just a split line?
Well, we're not talking about splitting a single family traditional house into multiple lots. We're talking about splitting like a duplex into a twin home. So that it's still going to have the same amount of infrastructure. It's just the cost for assessments are going to be split 50/50, if that makes sense. And so the costs are the same. They're still exactly what they're going to be. The, the costs don't change. We're just saying who pays for that cost? Half of it's going to go to one property owner. The other half's going to go to another property owner. Instead of 75% or 25 on this side, a 30 and 70 on the other side, it's going to be 50/50. This makes it easier for us when we're going to have, because we're going to see a lot more lot splits. Um, and this makes it easier for the county because then instead of having to calculate which lot has how much square footage on this side and how much square footage, which is a percentage of the total, we just say it's 50/50, uh, for that special assessment proceedings. Cost doesn't change. It's still $100 for that lot, but now half of it, 50% of it's going to be paid $50 on one side, $50 on the other side.
I think, I'm also confused though. Why is it only still $100? Because if you make street improvements and a duplex, they got twice as many cars as my house, a single family.
Exactly.
That's, that's what I can do here. Why isn't both sides paying 100%? Because like, like just because I pull into this driveway and I happen to have somebody living on the other side of that wall, that's, you know what I mean? Like that's twice as many cars in that one driveway.
Like driveways are private property though. That's not, that's not through the city. Private property driveways that, uh, actually their crutch is actually going to be.
But is this for, this is for?
Existing property.
Existing properties or is this for every, even what's going to be built in the duplex coming?
This is existing property. So, um, just kind of for the history of it, let's say that you already had a lot and there's going to be duplex on that. It's already determined that there's going to be $100, let's say, freezing that on that lot. Nothing changes. It's just saying now it's a one person paying $100. You have two people. One person's paying 50, another person's paying 50. The costs don't change. It's just who's responsible for paying that cost? That's what changes.
Again, if you had common ownership, if I owned a duplex and I decided to sell half of it to MICA, I don't want to pay his property tax.
Correct. His special assessments.
And the special assessments. So the county then would apply half to me and then the half that I just sold goes with the property. And that, that splitting, it's splitting common ownership of one property into two separate owners.
Correct. Absolutely. And that way you don't have, like you said, one property owner is carrying the burden of that special assessment while other property owners paying nothing for special assessments.
So in that scenario too, if you own that duplex property yourself, you own it for 10 years, then you sell it, split it. Is it taking into consideration the assessments he's paid up to that 10 year and just split him the remaining?
It's just that, it's just splitting the remainder, just like anything else. I mean, you're still, there's remaining downs of the special assessments and 50% of the remainder is going to one side, 50% to the other side. Nothing changes in that regard.
Are we making this too difficult?
Take your time. This is part of the tradition. Yeah. It's part of the special assessment process. It's part of that. This is just what we want to make sure everybody's aware of because this lot splits are going to come up more and more. It seems to be a very common trend now. And so we want to make sure that everybody's aware. Because if we're going to do it this way, then we'd have to do a respread agreement where we would hire Brett Chauvin and Kevin Cowan to do a respread assessment every time. And that, it caused a lot of issues. Um, it caused some issues with cloverleaf, with that determination of cost and the county has to call us again and again to try to make, make sure that the assessments are being allocated to the correct parcel number every single time. And this time we can just simply say with this, we can tell the county 50%, 50%. Still don't have to do an internal calculation. But the costs stay the same. It's still that same box paying $100. It's just now one person's paying 50, another person's paying 50, if it's split.
This is not a unique off-the-wall idea. It's a, it's an industry best practice. I live in a twin home and one side got purchased by somebody else and somebody else owns the mine. It's, makes sense that each side pays 50/50 of the specials for that twin home.
Just keep throwing me off with the cars in the driveway. I think, I think he wants more cars than he's driving. Um, the resolution is very valuable, council. They're not here right now. That's why I'm sort of going to summarize it for you guys. But I worked with bond counsel on the concepts behind it and then what they came up with. And so, uh, it is recommended city council adopt the resolution. It's different allocation assessments for lots of parcels that are divided after assessments have been completed. But once again, feel free. If you guys have more questions, anything about this, feel free to ask me at this time. Um, if you want to talk with Craig Crossit or, or my instructor myself after, feel free as well. And if anybody else behind you, Allison, my office is open. May you call me Monday, Friday. I know it's a complicated process and we would have to make that distinction between special assessments and general taxes. So.
Again?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I get, I get what you're saying. Like it's one building. I don't agree necessarily that that's the best way, but that's fine. I get, I get why you do it that way. It makes sense.
I don't like it. It makes sense. Even before the lot split, it's going to be $100 on that lot. And I mean, that's the way the engineers are going to drive it. They're going to say lot one has even what the duplex are single family. It's going to be lot one has $100 on it. It's just once it's split, that $100 is going to be 50/50.
I think I confused myself with the cars in the driveway thing.
My office is open eight, one thirty.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this. Want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to do the, uh, allocation assessments. Lots of parcels that are divided after assessments have been, I believe you get to see Goddard.
Brett makes the motion.
Diddy, diddy.
You want to second that?
Second.
For the seconds. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rezoning, Assistant Administrator, Mr. Ryan. One of your, one of your, uh, former staff members.
Yes, I was, I was, yes.
Was very complimentary of you and said, just tell you hello. So.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, so yes, I am presenting this rezoning ordinance. Uh, and no, it's not because I really miss planning a zoning for Mike and her position, although it is, you know, part of my heart. Uh, but I am filling in for Mica as he was fulfilling his civic duty and serving on a jury. So congratulations to him. He just returned back to us this afternoon, uh, from his service. So, uh, this property is located on Second Avenue. This is owned by Brandon Ball, who is requesting a rezoning, uh, from commercial to residential. So currently it is zone C one, which is the designation for the central business district and is requesting a rezoning to R one, which is single family residential. The case being, uh, because he is looking to renovate this into a single family residential unit. And so in order to do that and to be, uh, in, uh, I just lost my current thought. Uh, in order to be.
In compliance.
I'm sorry?
In compliance.
In compliance. Yes, thank you. In compliance with our existing zoning code. Uh, it is necessary to do the rezoning. This has been presented to the planning commission. The planning commission did approve this on a vote of six to zero, so it was unanimously approved. Uh, the ordinance, uh, this is the analysis that was presented to the planning commission. Again, uh, going through this, uh, this is the location of the property, again on Second Avenue. Uh, the rezoning, uh, ordinance is included in the agenda packet this evening. It is recommended that, uh, first waive the reading of the ordinance by a voice vote and then approve rezoning for 1 through 4 of West Second Avenue, which is case number zone 24 dash four with a voice and roll call vote for the ordinance.
Questions?
I think it's a cool idea.
Yeah?
You have a basketball court in that center.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, waived the reading of the ordinance.
I second it.
Chris, the seconds. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I seek a motion to approve the rezoning, um, 24 West Second, case number number 2444. Somebody want to make that motion?
Do you have somebody special?
I'll make the motion to approve the zoning.
I second it.
Okay. Uh, we'll put a voice roll call vote.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The ordinance 971.
Thank you.
And I, I do want to, I do want to say that I had just a, yeah, I had a brief opportunity to visit with Brandon. Uh, you're a teacher right here in the front row. A second. I remember it's like, almost sure somebody said some.
Basketball court?
No, he's not.
He didn't say no.
Hold on. What is this? I know. He's thinking about it, but, but you're a shop instructor and probably pretty good with working with wood and everything. So I think it'll be real exciting to see what he does with the house. And probably once you get that done to the church, turn it into a house. Andre will probably want some more time at his house. So.
Brett's freaked out about it. I think it's cool. I want to see the boot for instance, man, just because of those.
In like a not weird way, can we tour it before you move in?
I didn't see this, dude.
That's a pretty awesome idea, Brandon.
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you.
One other thing I, I neglected to mention earlier before we talked about the budget. There are a couple of things I think we, we need to add. This year, the, the insurance, health insurance for our staff has gone up $48,000. And there was some discussion about the possibility of splitting that. But I would like to see us fully fund that health insurance for our staff. In my past history, there's nothing more demoralizing and in terms of work, when you have a situation where you get a salary increase and then half of it's clawed back because you just got hit with the health insurance increase. And, um, and everybody complains about, you know, when they look at some of our starting pay and stuff. But, um, I think the benefits, it's one way we can help encourage and keep our staff. And so I would, since we're going through this process, want to, want to do that. And then the other thing I think, uh, that Dale mentioned earlier is that, uh, I'd like to, uh, recommend that we fully fund the, uh, senior center as we go through this process, uh, determining whether or not the county's going to give us the 18,000 or 6,000. Uh, but I, I think we need, I'd like to make a comment that we're fully funding what we're doing with the senior center. That's just kind of the end on, uh, the, and Matt, we appreciate you being here this evening and we'll let you take over and present the budget.
I'm not allowed to take a delivery of the discipline of advisors. Um, I will say you guys have very good health insurance for your staff. Uh, historically, the way it worked, back in the old days of group health plans where, uh, you know, it's single family or a, a family health insurance plan for one employee was the same cost premium wise as plan for another family. That's gone. Everything's on the individual now. So if you have three kids, your premiums are much higher than somebody with no kids. But in the past, what we used to do was we would always pay the full cost of the employee's health insurance and then we'd split the remainder between, you know, what that difference was. Uh, 80% staying with the city with funds and 20% with 40%. Since we've gone away from that, we've had to kind of do some math to figure out a way to keep those, even so that, you know, the employee was paying about in that same range, although the cost of premiums were, you know, like I said, somebody had four kids, their premiums are much higher than somebody with no kids. So we figured out a way to basically maintain the old, uh, group rate structure and keep it so that, you know, employee with a family plan pays the same as another employee with a family plan. So the costs have gone up and there's, we, you know, we toyed around. And every, what, basically what we've done is every couple of years, they're going to have a look at it and we'll determine how much to increase that portion of the employee contributes. And it's still maybe less than 20%, which is what they, what kind of the standard was in the past. We're still subsidizing, subsidizing the wrong word. Also, we're still paying a more generous portion of that health insurance than, uh, you know, even what we did before. And we still have good health insurance and a good deal for our employees versus what other cities and other organizations.
No, that's all clear.
I thought I heard you.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. So this is budget overview here. This shows the, uh, operating budget for all of our city funds combined into the single matrix. Uh, when I say operating budget, I'm not including the transfers in this, which is essentially money we're moving from one fund to another. If we look at that complete picture, which you do actually have in your packet, you're going to see a much wider number of expenditures and revenue. And that's because some of those funds that we're budgeting for transfer are going from revenue generating funds or going from budget funds into non-budgeted funds and that affects the way we do things. A lot of that money we're transferring, which looks like an expenditure, is actually going into either reserve funds or capital funds, which we may or may not spend in budget here. So that's why we present this to kind of give a better operating position of what the city is looking for.
And just for clarification, this is the budget based on the 10 million acres, right?
Yes, this is. Everything you're going to see tonight is based on a 10 million acreage. Until we get to the end where I've provided some examples of what the changes will be. And I'll just say this upfront, all 10 of those mills, we, we have the ability to levy based on our notice sent to the county already. Every single one of those mills is going to go towards street projects. 100%, this is not for anything else. This is not for the mayor's airplane. This is not for vice mayor's, uh, jet ski. It's 100% for street improvements. Street improvements that are long overdue, that have been underfunded for a decade or more because, you know, all we, all we put aside for the last 10 years until this year was $200,000 a year for street improvements. And that went a little farther 10 years ago than it did last year. So, yeah, that's why we've made, the, both council, this council and previous council have made commitments to, uh, improving the street system. We've been developing the budget over the course of several months. We've had feedback from staff, from the governing body. Uh, we've had some feedback from some of the civic groups we've worked with, particularly those that are interested in our, uh, New North Park. Um, the proposed budget as presented gives three options to increase the general fund mill. But like I said before, everything that we're, I'm going to show you for general fund in particular is going to be based on 10 mills. And I will show you when we get to the end, how we will ratchet that down to the, we're giving you the, uh, we're going to give you examples here of what a six and a 4.7 million acreage will look like. But again, it is up to you to make that determination on what, if any, mill of. But again, it is up to you to make that determination of what, if any, mill levy increase there will be. And they're not making that decision tonight. We're just presenting tonight. They're going to publish notice that we can have a full public hearing at the next meeting, at which time you will all be able to come up and shine in on what the budget proposals are and they will make a decision at that time. So again, this is just giving us ourselves the ability, if you choose to, to increase the mill levy by zero or up to ten mills. Like I said, a mill levy increase will be required to fund the city's capital improvement goals, particularly street improvements. I'm not saying you have to do ten mills this year and ten mills next year. I'm saying that some mill levy increase, if you want to put any additional capital, and you'll see when we get to the budget, like you've already seen so far, there is just not a lot of extra money for these single, these additional projects. Proposed street improvements and development of the North Park will require additional revenue above what's currently living in general fund. The North Park could partially be funded with cash reserves, potentially. It could also, in order to build out the park as the way the public has envisioned it, we will need to dedicate revenue going forward to either funding it or paying down any mills we take out to build it. All funds generated by the increase of mill levy, again, I'll say one more time, approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars per mill will be transferred to the capital improvement fund and will be used for street infrastructure projects. In the first year of the currently in development 2025-2035 capital budget, street projects will use fund balance and any new tax levy from transfers going forward. Fund balance when capital improvement fund grows and plans for the North Park Street are solidified. A portion of this levy may be shifted to bond interest fund for funding debt service for either street or parks projects. Regardless of the mill, and that is not specific to what you're additionally doing. I'm talking about overall revenue generated.
Over time.
Over time.
I just think, some people I think have read that and thought that, well, after this first year, we do, we get eight hundred thousand in there, then next year we're going to move it someplace else. But we're committing for five years to have eight hundred thousand dollars round numbers being put into street improvements, which is eight times, five is four million dollars. So we're not going to run Peter to pay Paul, somebody mentioned that last time.
And at the next, at the meeting where we hold the public hearing, potentially even at the meeting next week, I have another plan that I've been developing for a lower mill levy that would extend the time of the timeframe of those projects by a year or two, but we'd probably be sold to the same place with more flexibility. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk about too much of that tonight for the sake of confusing everyone, but it's something I've been working on for the last week or so. Regardless of the mill levy increase chosen, staff, myself included, still recommend transferring that additional revenue into the capital improvement fund for the use of street projects. The portion of the property tax increase funded by growth, which is going to be everything but any additional mill levy, it's just going to be a flat mill levy. The additional revenue from that is going to be used to fund increases for cost for our general operations. That is include a myriad of things. Fully funding positions that may not have been built in the past. That includes increased health insurance, increases, includes increases for what we're required to pay on employees' behalf for Keters and KPNF. Those numbers are much higher than they have been previous years. Keters is now up to over twelve percent, which is about four percent more than it has been in the last couple of years. KPNF is up to twenty-two percent. And our single largest employee cost center is the police department, all of whom except for our police clerk are in KPNF. And that is one hundred percent funded by the general fund, which is mostly funded by mill levy. Our police department uses more than the total mill levy we, the total mills we levy for general fund operations. More, it is not enough alone to pay for our police department.
And we're glad that we have you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
No, I know what you're saying. It's like, no, no, there's.
It's the, you know, surprise, you know, radar stuff they need to cost a million dollars that I get upset about. But, you know, funding there, having them here is, you know, definitely worth it. So if you look here, we have general fund on the revenue side. As you see there, assumes ten mills. I'm going to try not to get either Ryan or Trey in the eye of this laser. I'm buying a tap mill levy. And you'll see most, almost all of that is going to be in that top section, which is taxes of franchise fees, which mill levy increases included in that. It's going to go into the general fund where we receive that tax revenue. It is going to be transferred, and we'll show that on the expenditure side, from the general fund into the capital improvement fund, which is, I'll talk about that a little more. So you see there that top line, seven hundred and seventy of that difference right there is the, is ten mills of new mill levy. The difference between that and that minus that seven hundred and seventy thousand, that additional amount is increased in valuation based on our current mill levy. They're also projecting a slightly higher amount of franchise fees, about fifteen thousand dollars, which was last year. We're projecting a, anywhere between a three to five percent increase over anticipated revenue for this year for our various other sales taxes. Some of our sales taxes perform different from those because they're generated from a different place. The city sales tax is generated by sales physically within city limits. The city compensating use tax is generated by purchases made by our residents outside of the city. So internet purchases, car purchase, other jurisdictions, et cetera. The central county sales tax is the portion of the county's sales tax that we share. So it's not specifically tied to the city as far as being generated there. It's generated by central county and we are entitled to a share of that based on a configure, based on a calculation, which I've never been able to get a straight answer on, that has something to do with mill levy population, et cetera. It's a very complicated process. We just, I've always been told that we're getting our fair share of the deal. So we've had good, we've had good revenue growth this year with that sales tax. I'm not complaining. I've done it. Alcohol liquor tax, that is up higher, this number and that number both we had last year. That is a number that the state sends us, so we're not doing any kind of projection to get to that. That's what they're basing our liquor sales on and that's what generates that tax. The only other thing here that we'll talk about a little bit are the motor vehicle and other personal property tax, tax line items, which is the motor vehicle, recreational vehicle, sixteen, twenty meter trucks, watercraft, let's see, do we have commercial vehicle, the next number, yeah. Again, those numbers are also, those estimates are provided to us by the county and the state. So we're not picking those numbers out of the air. That's what they're telling us the levy is going to be. On the expenditure side, the, by far the largest cost center for the general fund is going to be personnel. So personal services, that's what's there. Most of that is PD. We also fund a quarter of our, our administration out of the general fund for personnel costs. And we fund both of our community development staff out of the general fund. So that's going to be our city engineer, or, excuse me, our city community development director and our code enforcement planner is, Tina, gets funded out of the general fund as well. Contractuals, this is going to be any service that's provided to the city for our normal operations. It can be anything from IT support. It can be things like utilities. It can be, you know, transportation for staff for attending meetings and conferences. It can be positive attending meetings and conferences, professional services, legal services. Ryan, for example, Harland can sometimes be included in that. Any, especially any service that's provided for our operation, city staff's not providing it herself. Commodities and supplies, that is going to be anything physically that we purchase, office supplies. You know, supplies for, in general fund is going to be things like, you know, the uniforms that the police buy, things like that, all the other equipment, small, not regular equipment purchases that they make for their operations. Capital outlay is the next line item down. That is going to be larger ticket physical purchases that are only purchased not regularly, so like a one-time thing. So like a, those two right there are actually two police vehicles for, for next year that, you know, we're expecting those to last anywhere from three to five years based by mileage. And these are actually, I believe, these are supervisor, supervisor vehicles. So they'll probably last longer. They don't get quite as much fire and tear as the street, the street patrol uses their vehicles for. Non-operating expenses, that's typically things that, you know, we're paid for that are not necessarily related directly to city operations. So when we contribute to the Chamber of Commerce, some of that's going to be coming out of there. When we contribute to the library, because, you know, we do pay the library. Not only do we, you know, remit to them the tax we levy on their behalf, but we also pay some, cover some of the costs of their funding as well. That's what gets done there. Seniors, stuff we talked about, come out of that, will come out of that cost center, et cetera. Capital outlay discretionary, that is going to be essentially the carryover fund balance that we take forward from this year to the next. So if you look here, sorry, where it says, second line, revenue over under expenditures. That's basically saying, we are operating, it looks like we're operating at a two point four million dollar deficit for general fund, because we're starting out with two point five million. We're ending with thirty-one thousand, but this two point five, six eight million right there, that is not going to actually get spent. We put it in that cost center because we have to do that to get the mill levy we want from the state. That is essentially carryover that will be used for operating capital at first of the year. It's also money that we have set aside over several years for different capital projects that have not necessarily been, have been identified but not essentially spent yet. Things like turn lanes for one hundred eighty dirt in Kellogg. Things like, well, we had discussed, discussing some of our community center at some point. You know, we actually did.
North, North Park?
Yeah, for the North Park, we actually did use some of the previous year's carryover for, did you see, we actually had a bigger operating deficit last year. Of course, if you look at the 2023, you see that we did come in under budget.
And that included in that would be like the six months forward looking cash flow?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we like to keep it, we like to keep it several, that's probably actually more than, that's probably more like three months, three or four months worth of operating cash available to us. But again, we are carrying forward money that we've set aside for these unscheduled but, and capital projects. And, you know, because some of this stuff is going to take cash upfront to get state money. You know, there's always a map with those kind of grants, so we like to do that. But again, again, we've identified some of that money potentially to be used for the North Park, depending on, you know, what that first phase is going to look like once we get all the engineering and other, other estimates done on it. The final line item there, that's the one, we've seen go from one point one six million last year to two point oh eight million this year. That is the difference, that difference is that transfer of mill levy into the capital improvement fund, specifically for street projects. So here we got a breakdown of all of our cost centers. We're kind of just pre-showing you these same expenditures again, but broken down by department. The big number here, the three million, remember, two point five of that is that cash carryover that we talked about in the previous lineup, which is not actually money we're going to spend, but it's available to us. We have budget authority for should, if we are able to do some of those projects, if we are able to put some money into the park. We get, we get approved by KDOT to do the turn lanes or what, some other project on Kellogg or some other big state controlled project, we have that kind of cash there to do that. We could, because we're, because we're identifying it in budget as an expenditure, we have the ability next year to transfer that into the debt service fund to make that payment. We have the ability to transfer it into the capital improvement fund to, if we identify a capital project we know we won't be able to do next year, we can transfer it and then have those funds available to the capital improvement fund to use in years after that. Well, I have it broken down two ways here, both by specific department and also by type. So that's that two point five nine I talked about that's actually looking like it's coming out of just admin. That's actually just that cash carryover. I should have probably broken that out in that, from the, from the admin cost center. That's where we, that's where we always put it. There aren't really many other changes. You guys don't really, you guys are probably actually going to spend less money next year than you have this year, because I'm assuming you're all going to be back and we're not going to have to buy somebody a new iPad or, or going to get somebody a new laptop. Or you know, unless you're going to give yourself a raid, which I wasn't, I just think that if you do, we'll make it work. So we have, we have that there. That's why you still change your, no big change in your budget. I'm basically just increasing it to a, similar to what we spent the year before and basically what we think we're going to spend this year is all an increase effort. City hall, that is specific to just, most of that is going to be utilities for this building. It's going to be, you know, supplies we purchase for, you know, holding our offices here, quote unquote, things like that. Municipal court, a lot of that is legal services, because remember, we contract out for our prosecutors, for our judge, for court-appointed attorneys, translators, et cetera. That, that goes into our court operation. That's most of what that cost is. I've got it broken down below by type. If you have any questions, we can go into that. If you, you should have more detail, even this, in your packet. You want to get down to the line items and see what exactly is changing where. I will say just now, because I know you're going to ask about it, most of what we're seeing for changes in commodities are going to be things that are essentially inflation-related. Again, there's a lot, some things are more than others. Some things tend to go up with inflation. Some things tend to stay the same regardless. And then again, on the, on the contractual side, most of those increases are going to be for things like utilities that do track with inflation. So here is Big Bad PD up there with that big number up top for their police administration. And you can see almost two million of that is for personnel costs. Now again, that's not just salaries. And again, that is our biggest department. You are up to sixteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, uniformed officers. Those two other staff are included in this budget. The current police clerk and a, and another clerk position that I believe you're going to use for animal control. So that's all included here. This also includes, like I said, increased costs for their retirement. KPNF is a great retirement system and it's almost double the cost of our, further than, than Keters. But that's one of the reasons it's, it's actually funded and Keters is not completely funded. Now for the city side, Keters is pretty much funded, the unfunded liability for Keters mostly is on the schools. But still, KPNF's a great program. It is something that attracts talent from our police department. When we get somebody good, one of the reasons they're coming to state, coming to work here is because we offer KPNF and not everybody does. The city witch does, someone doesn't. And again, overwhelmingly, this cost center law enforcement is police administration. So it's salary benefits for PD, contractual, commodities for PD, equipment, services they use. And then again, capital outlay, that line item is police vehicles. And again, for code thirty, that's two, two administrative vehicles or non, non-troll vehicles essentially for next year. Recreation and culture, you see here, this is everything from our pool, our parks. This is all operational costs, not, not capital costs for parks. They got a community center, library services, which is, library services, which is code three fifty, process number three fifty. That is basically our cost for maintaining the building. So it's going to be like utilities, things like that. The building, library operations, that is thirty-five thousand. That is something we transfer or subsidize the library's operations with. Community events, we do, in the past at least, we have contributed money and held city events that we had some expenses for. So I'm just keeping that as an option for us going forward. And some of the, some of the costs we have for things like the main street market, et cetera, will get in out of there. And again, I have it broken down below by cost center. These salaries down here for parks and rec, that's pretty much pool staff for summer operations there. We don't really have any permanent staff that are paid out of this, out of this cost center. Community economic development, this is economic development planning and zoning. Activities committee, that's, that's an old line I mentioned, I didn't, sorry about that. We don't have activities committee anymore. Chamber of Commerce, the reason that's down so much is I've actually, depending on how much you do fund them next year, I'm actually paying for the bulk of that funding out of the transient guest tax, which is from another fund. It's, that's bed tax at the hotel that we've been collecting for many years. We just have not spent. We paid a portion of their funding last year from there and I'm going to plan on using as much of that as possible until that fund balance is brought down. And then year to year after that, we can use that funding to fund them. And then we'll only have to make up whatever the difference is with essentially regular general fund revenue. So that's why it's so much down. We're still funding them. It's just not coming out of that cost center. And again, regardless of what we budget, you know, you ultimately will determine what that, what that funding for the chamber will be. Code enforcement, this is, you know, Tina, everything from, you know, building inspections to. building inspections to, uh, uh, you know, uses of big, things like that. And again, personnel services down here, the reason that's gone up is because we have added Tina's. That's all of the, not just salary, like, you know, all the taxes, everything else that goes into paying for Tina and Micah come out of this cost center, that's what that is. And here's the transfers, you see the big one there? If you do the math, the difference between this year and last year's, or next year and this year is $770,000. That is, that is 10 mils. That's what we're pushing those 10 mils into capital improvement to be used for street projects. So we're on to the water fund. Uh, this water fund, uh, revenue projection takes into account the, uh, assuming you make the changes you're going to make tonight for the water ordinance, that's already included in this, these numbers. We've triple-checked them, we believe these are what the revenue will look like. This will enable us to, amongst other thing, other things, not only pay our normal transfers out of here, which is mostly going to debt service on the, uh, purple water storage tank and the 16-inch supply line that runs along the linear park, but also we're going to be able to put money back into the sewer reserve fund, which has not been funded for about three years now, at least not, and not funded at all in any way that I think is appropriate for a city of this size with a budget that we have and the inability to take care of major, uh, major emergencies if we have them. We're one well, we're, uh, we're one well shut down away from depleting almost all of the, uh, fund balance we have there. So we want to start putting that back in. That is one of the primary reasons we have asked for a, uh, increase in water. This city was able to run very cheaply on water for a long time because we had a huge source of water and a very small, uh, use of it. So we had a smaller population, didn't use as much water, and we had a great, a great deal of water to pull from. That's not the case anymore. The city has grown, our water demands are higher. We know that our city is going to continue to grow. We know that those water demands are going to be higher. And it's just not as easy to provide cheap water when you've got those kind of demands on your system. We're just running out. We're going to have to find somewhere else to draw from. We're going to have to set up another water source. We're going to have to buy water from somebody. We're already in talks, uh, to connect to the rural water district to give us some breathing room over the next couple of years to absorb some of that growth. But the point is, our water system is not a spring chicken. It is not going to get any younger. It's only going to grow, it's going to have more demand on it. We need to make sure we are able to repair that water system and we're able to enhance that water system to meet, to meet, to meet the demands of our growing population.
Man, I just want to interject. This afternoon I went to a meeting on water that was hosted by Senator Marshall and Mayor Woo. A couple of our sister cities in the ring around Wichita are in the process of building their own water treatment plants. Derby is in the process and Valley Center. The facility, we met at, uh, 2120 Hoover, which is the new address of the half trillion dollar water treatment plant that the city is hopefully going to online, uh, by April of 2025. The, uh, we've also entered into and, and signed and joined a group, an association that's going to be part of the, uh, what's the name of that? It's called Water Reuse Association out of California. And they're in the process of setting up in Kansas, a, a, uh, a group of cities within the state to help with the process of the reuse of waters. So we're on the ground floor of this. It includes Dodge City, Garden City, Hayes, I believe. Valley Center is kind of one that led us on to that. And those guys all said, yeah, say hello to Ryan. And, uh, but also, uh, Johnson County. And reuse, conservation, uh, all these things, I think in the next five years, I mean, it's like, it's easy to be in a drought and say you need to conserve water. But going forward, uh, and Senator Marshall said that one of his goals that he'd like to see happen in Kansas and they're working hard in, uh, Garden City, I think, to, to get to the point where we reuse 100% of the water that we have available to reuse. The aquifer at this point is the way with the Wichita's reclamation project, uh, it's 92% capacity still, so there's plenty of water in the aquifer. Uh, but at the current level of rain, if we went back to normal rainfall, it'd probably take, they said they projected three years for, uh, gene reservoir to get back to, uh, conservation level. So, uh, I think they, I mean, conservation in terms of wanting zoysia or best, you know, bestie instead of bestie, uh, there's places where maybe, uh, over there in the seasons where the water in the sidewalk, where they cut the sidewalk and they reduce the grass footprint to about three feet and they need to rock that in and put foreign water in the street. But all I'm saying is, is that, uh, we've gotten by, like you said, but, you know, with very expensive water and even with the rates that we increased originally in the water ordinance, we're still below the average. Uh, so Derby is concerned about being connected to Wichita or, or Valley Center is. I think as we go through this process of determining what we need to do, we need to still look at what would cost us to hook into Wichita. We, we need to explore every option. I know everybody's going, oh, don't do that. We need to explore every option and we need to look at everything. And, and as we build this model of, of how we use water going forward, it's got to include conservation, uh, and, and we need to be a little more, uh, cognizant of, of how we're using that finite resource. That, I just thought I'd throw that in, I just, but, uh-
And I'll add something to, to my doom and gloom scenario that I've just described. We've been lucky with Brooke because, and, you know, all of our public work staff, because they've been able to do things to essentially allow us to operate at a high level despite our limited resources. You know, we're going to use part of our arpen money to put in that booster pump. It's going to, you know, basically enhance our ability to keep that water tower tapped up during high use over the summer. I don't know if you've looked at the numbers yet or what that's looked like so far. But I mean, that was, you know, we had that empty-
And our money just for the rest of this-
American Rescue Plan.
And that's money from the COVID money that we have to commit to use by the end of December.
Yeah, that we're committing for our, uh, essentially for our utilities, so. I was a little scared, just looking mad at me after I did that.
You're good, I just was listening. It wasn't mad.
And then on the, uh, sewer fund, you see here, we're projecting a little bit of an increase over, uh, what we budgeted last year. And again, this is really due to the customer base that we've added since, uh, we set the budget for 2024. So we're still performing very well with our sewer sales. We're actually, you can see there, we've got a pretty good, uh, anticipated fund balance. A little less more to spend this year, but again, I think we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll still be operating at a high level there. We probably inflated personnel, we, we always inflate personnel costs for budget purposes just to make sure that we can add staff, we can add, uh, we can add, if somebody, somebody's going from a single family health plan to a family health plan, we can anticipate those costs. We always inflate those numbers a little bit. And also, you know, we pretty much pick a, you know, flat fee that we're going to do for wage adjustments citywide. But we also like to give managers, departments, heads, city manager, you guys, et cetera, uh, the ability to, if you have high-performing employees you want to retain because they're going to operate from somewhere else, we've got that ability to do so. We've had that issue with sewer operators more especially. So we'll just give you a little bit of extra leeway there, the sewer department in particular. Uh, transfers here for, for sewer, uh, that's funding capital improvement fund. Uh, in the past, we've funded some capital improvement fund. And here, this is primarily funding our sewer reserve fund, which is a much healthier position than our water reserve fund. It's also funding our, uh, equipment, uh, equipment reserve fund. We like to fund the equipment reserve fund from three different sources. About half of it from general fund, a quarter of it from water, a quarter of sewer. And we're slowly switching back to where the sewer's paying its quarter and not filling in the water fund's quarter, like it has been for a couple of years. A new fund that we're, uh, we are required to establish now is going to be a store water utility. Um, and we are projecting about $110,000 in revenue and then about 3% a year going forward, just like we anticipate, uh, non-growth revenue for our, for our water and sewer funds. And then I'm projecting to spend, please don't spend any more than $80,000 in that first year. Pick a good project that costs about $8,000 and use it for that. That way we can continue to build fund balance there so we can take some of the, take care of some of the big strange issues the city has as we build that fund balance to move forward. So I know you guys want to hear that. And I mean, I'm even saying please spend less the following year, just so we can build up some of that fund balance. And once we have a better idea of what that actual revenue number looks like, we'll be able to be more strategic than that and plan for those big projects that we're, we're hoping to include in the 10-year capital improvement plan. Street fund, uh, street fund is primarily funded with a transfer from the general fund. The reason I've increased that, uh, up $150,000 next year is because for several years, we were essentially funding this fund with, uh, you know, the, essentially, we've had it with, uh, the county share of property, of the sales tax. And for several years in a row, we were not doing, we were not spending the full amount that we had, uh, set aside for the street projects. So we had a lot of fund balance here. Uh, we, one year we were able to transfer some of it out to put into capital improvement. Uh, but still, we had a, you know, we had over a million dollars in fund balance and less than a million dollars budgeted. So it really didn't make sense to continue to put that much money in every year. So we've kind of got to the point where we're in a much healthier fund balance for this fund and we're going to increase that, that transfer in back to where it should be, which we like to, uh, the kind of rule of thumb has always been, it's about three quarters of the county share of the sales tax and about one quarter of the city sales tax is what we use to fund street operations through that transfer from general fund. Uh, the rest of the funding comes from the, uh, fuel taxes from both the state of Kansas and City of County. Those are not really reliable, uh, oh, excuse me, those are very reliable numbers because those are estimates we get directly from them. We're not seeing a lot of growth there. You can see it's actually down what we're budgeting, uh, based on what we received last year. And I'm not sure if they're just giving us too low numbers or, but that is a lower amount than what we see in previous years. But notice the interest income line item, and the mayor spoke about this a little bit earlier this morning. Uh, per the auditor, we, he wanted us to transfer some of that interest income that we've kind of been getting for the first time ever. He wanted us to transfer that in, uh, half of that into capital improvement fund because the money that was earning that interest was temp notes that were in the capital improvement funds. So we put about half of it into the capital improvement fund. The other half of it, I decided, and you guys can stop me if you don't want me to do this, I've split it between the four main operating funds, water, sewer, street, general. So I'm putting a quarter of it in, I'm going to try to put a quarter of it in there this year and we'll address that as we do our normal transfers. Quarter of it goes into streets, quarter of it goes into water, quarter of it goes into sewers. So it helps offset some of those, uh, some of those, uh, you know, year-to-year inflationary impacts. Go ahead and keep it on general fund, I can do that too, so. Or put it all into capital improvement. Uh, but it's nice to be able to use that for all of our operations. Uh, street fund on the expenditure side, uh, biggest cost center there is still personnel. Uh, this funds three, one-third of our public works staff and it funds a little one-quarter of our administrative staff. Uh, we're transferring $50,000 out of here into the, uh, equipment reserve fund. We also, uh, this is worth the, uh, 250 of the, the $250,000, 250,000 will be normally, I've set aside for street maintenance as it comes out of this fund. Uh, library-
Sorry, you had talked about the possibility of like three years going forward, you know, last year went up to 200 to 250.
Before the, before the mayor's, uh, plan for the big, uh, the big expenditure, my, my goal was to, over the course of like four or five years, increase that number from 200,000 a year to half a million a year. And that was going to be like our starting point, for starting to take, you know, get a better grip on the street, the street program. And we can still do that too. Uh, but, um, I'm, I'm, you see, I'm putting in another 50,000 next, the year after.
Right, okay.
So that's kind of-
We, I know you'd mentioned that before.
And then we're, and basically that's going to be from growth, assuming we get to growth in sales tax where I just pay that for the basic without our channel. So could we just increase that transfer? Uh, library fund, this is a budgeted fund. Get the, uh, three mils going to the library for their request. Uh, they also get a share of the motor vehicle and the other personal property taxes. Uh, you see here, I've got these, sorry. I've got this expenditure down here for 12,000. I've got this misery revenue right here for 2,800. Those are balancing adjustments so that I can pay them the full amount, the tax we receive on their behalf. And you can see here, we ended the year only paying them a portion of what they had in fund balance. We have these leftover fund balance, uh, hanging out in these past couple of years. Well, I finally, the, the reason we did that is, you know, we're only allowed to pay them as much as we budget and budget authority for them. So I'm plugging those numbers in there. So if we receive more in deliquid taxes, which is typically what that is, is taxes that were supposed to be paid prior year, finally got paid this year, we're able to prevent that money to them for them to use for their operations. So that's why I put those numbers in there, just to give them more budget authorities and we can pay out what we give. We can't overpay them. You know, we get money for them, we can give it to them. We can't give them additional money through this process. So that's the only reason you see that number like that there. Parks and Recreation Fund, this is funded by a transfer from the general fund for $50,000 a year. Sometimes we spend all of it, sometimes we don't spend any of it. I like to spend about half of that $50,000, uh, in a normal year on just small street park projects. Uh, we did the, the, uh, benches, we did the covers of the benches, uh, stuff like that over the years. I think we replaced some planners one time, I can't think of it all come in. But again, we like to, in a typical year, bank half of it, spend half of it. Well, next year, we want you to spend some of it. We've got $250,000 in budget authority for that fund, anticipating of getting fund balance of $263,000. So spend up to $250,000 if you want to on big proj, bigger, bigger projects in the current park system, adding a pocket park somewhere, maybe something on that scale, not, this is not going to be enough to build an entire park.
Though we did spend a few dollars here last week and, or year day resurfacing.
Yeah.
And that, so that would-
Yeah, that's the kind of thing we want to use that money for. Smaller, smaller, kind of medium-ish projects, small to medium projects.
Think about the, the linear park addition, I think it was shy of 100. And you talk about the Rustic Creek Park that we're obligated to put together, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, we did the, uh, the-
Means Park. So that 250 we can, we'll eat it too quickly. It may seem like a lot, but we have three parks, current parks that we're, we need to reinvest.
Whatever happened to those bridges?
They're in the works. The, the paving and the lighting is, uh, coming first, but the bridges are coming. Not the bridges, the bridges.
The bridges are coming. What if I land to it by sea?
So this is the tourism promotion fund. This is the fund by which we are able to levy the 6% hotel tax. And you can see, we've got a very healthy fund balance there compared to the revenue ranges. We have not been spending this money. We are spending some of it this year to, uh, fund, uh, our, our funding for the chamber. And if, if you choose to, you can spend, I'm projecting you spend up to that much on funding the chamber next year, or as much of that as you want to, um, just because, you know, this fund, the last council sort of dedicated, uh, and it's not uncommon for hotel taxes to be used to fund chambers of commerce and other, uh, commission of visitor bureau type operations. Uh, so that's why, you know, we decided to do that. And so again, you know, we don't get a lot here. I mean, we got a little bit more last year because, and that, that's a miss, don't rely on that number going forward. We had, uh, the new hotel paying money to the wrong taxing entity. It was supposed to be going toward the star bond, instead it came to us. So, and, but we had to actually offset our revenue from them this year to take that into account. So that's, that's what we actually collected, but we're not going to get to do that year after year. And we had, we did have to, but we didn't pay it back, we didn't receive the full amount that we would have from our, uh, revenue this year. So it gets about 25ish a year. That's kind of an ambitious goal, because that's basically just the roadway and it's a smaller council. It's a smaller council, so I'm generating a ton of that revenue. And we won't get anything from the, the, uh, cap until, until the star bunch is paid off. Uh, Thanganiq Fund, uh, I put a number here for revenue and I put a number here for expenditure. So depending on what we receive, you can pay that back to them. I may even bump that revenue or that, uh, I may bump up those up a little bit. Uh, once I take another look at, uh, revenue for the year, just to see where they're at.
Yeah, we may want to explain to them the CID.
Yeah, so, depending they can filter, build their new expansion. They created a CID to be improved district. And one of the ways that they can improve some of those costs is you charge a 2% sales tax at their, at their operation there. So they've been doing that and we have been collecting it. And what we do is we collect it with our normal, uh, sales tax, uh, collection. We retain 1% for an administration fee per the council's, uh, instruction and we remit the rest of that to them. So this is going to give another pass through, where we have built up some fund balance here in a year that we can move in capital for whatever. It's not a lot, because like it is 1% of what they're generating. And based on the collections today, it's going to, even after it expires in 20 years, it's still not going to cover the cost that they had building those improvements. So we, we'll continue to get it for a while. It's just, again, it's not very much money. We just basically it's a pass through to them. We just take 1% for the administrative fee. We could have taken up to five if the council chose to, but we only took one. The debt service, again, another property tax, uh, uh- The debt service, again, another property tax, uh, uh, property tax levy fund, uh, this is the fund we use to make our debt service payments on all of our debt, including our water and sewer debt, which is where those transfers from water and sewer come into play. That's money directly funding, funded by water and sewer operational revenue to, uh, to make, uh, payments on, for the sewer side, it's for the plant, for the water side, it's heads for the purple tank and for the 16-inch supply line. Um, we budget a large geo proceeds here, uh, just for, uh, essentially have a room on the budget, for room on the expenditure side to offset that, so we, if we retire like, a lot of bonds in one year, we have the budget authority to do it. We ran into this problem a couple of years ago, so I'd always bump that number up, and I've done it on the other side too, to get that authority to where we can, if we do need to retire bonds, we can retire them and have the, that budget authority to do so, because this is a budgeted fund, so you can't spend more than what you adopt.
And then I, I would just like to point out that in 2025, we're starting to pay the credit card debt on our million seven that we spent on streets this year, and the payment for that, I believe, is a 110.
About 110,000.
Thousand dollars.
And then we've got another 270-ish a year for the city's contribution to the star bond, which are, I don't think I've each of our bonds listed out here, but we have a $3 million bond and then a $800,000 bond, that the city letting to build essentially the infrastructure over there, and we're, we're moving to pay that down with fund balance here. So at some point, we're going to have to start, uh, either, we've increased, we've increased the ability a little bit to take, to take full advantage of the payment on the, uh, the, um, the street bond, but also we're going to be contributing some into there to.
And I just wanted to mention too, that that 110,000 for 20 years is, you know, $2,200,000, so we're paying $500,000 interest over 10 years for a million seven in streets.
Yeah.
So that's one of the reasons why maybe we should pay for streets as we go and not kick them out over 20 years.
Right.
Mayor, and I just want to mention that 270,000 that is servicing the, the, our, the city's contribution to the star bond district, that, that is serviced by revenue created by the property tax that we receive from the builds that are gone there. Nobody over there to get their free ride, there's property tax revenue being collected by the facilities over there.
Pay for their own water, and it's not a lot.
Pay for their own water, but the, the net new property tax revenue from the real estate that's been built over there, that's servicing the debt for the city's portion, um, towards the star bond district there. I think that's important now.
Good, thanks.
So, so you got breakdown here, principal of interest at the bottom, then I got broken down by geo and techno up top. Like I said, I'm plugging in a lot of money there for potential techno retirements, so we have budget authority to make those payments if we need to. And at the bottom here, cash basis reserve, that's sort of the number that we plug in to offset that. So we've got, you know, sort of a, you know, ability to spend up to all of the revenue we receive potentially, plus all of the, um, uh, you know, revenue we get from specials and things like that, and then spend potentially even all of our fund balance if we decide to, which we're not going to, but for budget purposes, we include that as a expenditure to give us the budget authority to do so if we would like to. So, this is the schedule of transfers, uh, for all of our funds combined. You see the big one there for, uh, general fund to capital improvement fund? It's, uh, the difference between last year and this year, or this year and last, or next year and this year is $770,000. I don't know if I've mentioned it or not before, that $777,000 is up to 10 mills of new revenue that we will transfer to the capital group fund to be used in street projects. The rest of our transfers, I didn't change much, um, we're except for, you know, we're starting to pay more, we're increasing $100,000 a year into water reserve fund to build that fund balance back up to give us a cushion for potential hose in our water system, and to hopefully in the future, fund some sort of new expansion to the system for a new source of water. Citywide, this is a look at the percent changes for each of our different types of expenditures. Uh, overall personnel costs are up about 12.59%, contractuals are about, just around 20%. We're actually a reduction in capital outlay because we're, some of the stuff that we normally do in capital, we're not projecting this year for, but mostly, we've funded our capital or our, uh, equipment reserve fund sufficiently enough that if we do need to do some capital, equipment or vehicle purchases outside of our budgeted purchases for TV, we have cash balance in the equipment reserve fund to do so, so we don't need to put it in the budget for those kind of purchases, which we sometimes do. Uh, non-operating expenses, again, that's mostly of that number there, that's mostly the, um, uh, uh, funding for the chamber of commerce. And the bottom there is the transfer, if you saw what those are earlier, that's transfers from our operating funds into other operating or capital funds, depending on which one it is. That's about 46% of the total expenditure budget. Uh, this is just a breakdown of what the different, uh, uh, types of, of, uh, personnel expenditure have gone up from the budget from last year to this year. Uh, about 15% for salaries. We, so, we budget, just a little nerding out with you guys while we're wasting each other's time here. Um, we budget numbers for vacation, holiday pay, holiday work, et cetera, because we kind of know about how much we spend year to year on that kind of stuff, but when we actually, uh, pay out, everything gets applied to the cash salary. Why? So that's why you see budget for those line items, but no actual expenditures of prior or estimates for this year, because we just don't really spend that out of those, those line items, or really budgeting only line items. So that's, that's what that is for. Uh, salaries for overtime, that's, I'm budgeting about 8%, but again, most of that is going to be, uh, and most of that increase is not because I would say we're doing more overtime, it's just that we've got, you know, higher salaries year to year, so in budget, and overtime's paid a ton and a half, so that's why we budgeted that a little bit higher. Uh, health insurance, that's the big one. See here, it's about 12%. That's a little bit, uh, off from what it is actually going to be, uh, because we're budgeting additional health plans that we may or may not actually going to use, we're budgeting a family plan for each department in addition to what they actually have, in case somebody gets married, somebody has a kid, we're able to, we're able to come up with those extra expenditures for the, that employee. It's another great way to just, to, to give you some wiggers in your budget as well. Uh, the big one there you see is, um, uh, not only salary, pretty much directly correlated to salary, it's going to be social security and Medicare, the FICA taxes, uh, there's just, you know, that's, that is what it is, we pay half, employee pays half, just like any other, any other employer does. Uh, KPNF, um, you know, KPNF and, uh, Cavers, another big cost center there for, for salaries. Um, that's, uh, you know, that's the portion that the city pays, the employee pays their, pays a portion based on, uh, what's, what we would hold from them, so 6% for Cavers employees and with 7.15% for KPNF employees. Uh, let's see, yeah, the other, the other unemployment, uh, wellness program, flex spending, unemployment's pretty, pretty low, that's actually about 1% of, of salary. Uh, workers' comp is a little bit more, about 3.4% and, and change from last year, uh, but it's, I think, I think it is actually about, about 6%, I believe, of employee salaries. Uh, the, the, full-time employees, not, not, this number, that, that top number also includes like, the pool staff and, and seasonal staff, which don't, we don't, we do pay unemployment for them, but not health insurance, et cetera. Um, and then wellness program, that's basically, you know, we do some wellness things, training is all like that, but most of that's the, uh, the, uh, what we pay for the memberships for Genesis, which you guys are all entitled to, so if you don't add one, call Genesis and tell them you're, you know, with the city, because we got to entitle that as well, just like city staff is. And I provided this as well, I think you may have gotten it from Craig earlier, it just shows some of the changes in contractuals for, I sort of picked out things that have bigger changes to them, either percentage-wise or dollar amount, sort of like, you know, so it's 20%, but it's a $200 change in difference, so it's not much, but it's kind of showing what the types of expenditures that we're seeing go up look like. So if you look there, a lot for contract labor, that's, uh, uh, that, that increase there is actually mostly what we're paying for the, moing, moing city property, that's a lot more this year than, more than, more this year than it was last year for budget purposes, or anticipating it to be higher next year as well. Uh, insurance, insurance of bonds goes up year to year. Um, something for the big numbers. Software is huge year to year, you've got to remember, I don't know if you remember or not, but we did add the, this, all those different security features earlier this year, like, kind of right before all the ransomware attacks in the state were starting to happen, so we're glad we're proactive with that. I have to, I'm, I'll take credit for it, but it really was a strong recommendation from, from Imagine IT who recommended us going to that path, and I'm glad we did, because I don't know, I don't personally know anybody else, some of the other cities have gotten hit, I don't know anybody that actually works there, but I can't imagine how that, how that would be shut down or something like that happened. Um, but we're, I think, you know, we're, we're doing a regular review, internet IT security, and with that additional support we have from them, it's been a big help. So, just some fun math here for you. What we have on the left is a, what the, the various mill impacts would be for a home that, uh, market value is $150,000, and then on the right side, we have the impact with that same, uh, uh, that same mill impact would be on a home that's $300,000. Um, so, for 10 mills, the monthly impact on a home dieted $150,000 is $14.38 a month for 172.50 a year. The impact on a $300,000 home with a 10-mill increase is $345 a year, or $28.75 a month. I know that's not nothing, but we just wanted to put in perspective exactly what the mill change would do to a homeowner's, uh, tax bill.
And, and in addition to that then, is if you just move the decimal point to the left.
Right.
That gives you what 1-mill is.
Right, right.
So I just think that's in addition to the 10, just to remember that, if we did a 1-mill increase, that on a $300,000 house, that's $34.50.
So, I've just got two other examples here, possible things you might want to consider, 6-mill, 4.7-mill increases, and it just shows there the same thing, monthly, oh, sorry, I could do that one, uh, I got fat thumbs, monthly impact for a, uh, $150,000 home, monthly impact for a $300,000 home at 6 mills and at 4.7 mills. So again, not nothing in any, any scenario, it's definitely more money you'll be paying a year in property taxes, and it's not taking into account the increase you'll be paying for the growth of your own valuation, although we can't control that. I know, but I do think it's probably better if your home's going up in value than going down. Um, but still, I mean, it's, it's, it's real money for real people, and we need to be conscious of that whenever we consider any sort of revenue increase, whether it's property taxes, whether it's, uh, you know, um, special assessments, no matter what it is, we need to take into account that people can actually afford it, we, we need to operate the city the way we do. And this is our, the notice that we will publish, currently, it includes a 10-mill increase going from 31.2, I'm sorry, that's so small, 31.265 last year was what we adopted, or is what the current estimate for last year is, was 41.265, for, is what we would like to, uh, was what a 10-mill increase would be adopted this year. We can publish this notice, it will go into the time central on Thursday. After that, uh, we, anytime 10 days after that, we can hold a public hearing for both the revenue neutral rate and for the regular budget mill rate. During both public hearings, the people could come up and speak their, share their opinions on that. But up until you actually make a motion after that, those two public hearings, will we determine what the mill levy is going to be. It's not set now, we can publish this with, we can publish this with 20 mills on it, and that does not mean we're going to levy 20 mills. So this just gives us the ability, by publishing that amount, to publish up to 10 mills above what we have current, our current, uh, mill estimate is for, for this year. Um, you see there, just below that, is what the revenue neutral rate would be, 27.11 mills, which is about 4 mills lower than what we, uh, applied last year. Revenue neutral meaning that if we applied that 2.711 mills, we would only levy the same dollar amount of tax to did last year. We would not be gaining any of the new property additions to the city, uh, or taking advantage of growth and valuation of properties currently in the city, we would only be levying the same dollar amount as we did last year. And, uh, that's why we have to have this second public hearing, so we're being extremely transparent with people. Yes, even if we were keeping a flat mill levy, we're still levying more money because we're taking advantage of new property out to the city, and if your home went up in value, we'll be taking advantage, taking advantage of that growth as well. But it's all to fund our city operations, and any additional beyond 31.265 is going to go specifically for street projects. Uh, if you're interested, I can go into some of the more detail on what's on here. We're required to report our debt obligations, the total debt outstanding as of the first of the year. Um, we've got the value of what a mill is, uh, as well, or the total, total, not says valuation for the entire city, um, total, uh, total budget authority adopted as well. So we have, for these specific funds, we can spend up to, whatever that is, 32 million, I believe, yeah, my, my glasses too far away, up to 32 million from those funds alone, not to mention what we have in non-budgeted funds, our capital and reserve funds.
Number half, that's obviously debt service.
Yeah.
A lot of that going towards bond payments, which are financed by specials on all our new developments.
So, like I said, we're not taking any action on budget tonight, I would like a simple motion from you to authorize staff to publish this notice, so we can hold a public hearing on the July 3 meeting, or July 3, September 3 meeting, which is a Tuesday because it's the day after Labor Day, so July 3, Sunday, Monday, but still ample 10 days notice to get published on Thursday, have plenty of time to get, hold that public hearing at the, uh, September 3 meeting. So a simple motion from you would, would be, overkill, but we'll do it anyway, just to try and, be certain.
You could say, we moved to set the public hearing for Tuesday, September 3 at 7:00 PM, location City Hall, and we authorize staff to submit.
And yeah, and also tell me, tell me what that mill levy is.
The budget summary to the newspaper.
Yeah. You want it to be 10 mills so we can discuss more? You want it to be 7?
You could say budget summary as presented, which illustrates the 10 mills.
I mean, we can do, we can do the 10. We talked about looking at 6 and 4, we could also, we think we're not going to go over 6. We could do 6 and maybe calm everybody down a little bit, but they won't think that we're going to 10, if we're not going to, why put 10 out there? Aubrey, what do you think?
I'm leaning towards a 6, that's what we need to do, just to make a special.
Right, what do you think?
I'm also, like, I'm leaning towards the 6.
No pressure?
Well, I don't, I don't want to say the third 6 in a row, that's bad, but that's what I was thinking.
At least Chris doesn't have to.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's a reasonable, um, a reasonable adjustment.
So you're going to motion to publish the notice, public hearing, for revenue neutral rate in 2025 operating budget at a mill levy of 35.265, maybe 6%?
36.
You read your small operating.
You're, you're short.
It'd be 37. Saying the same thing up in hearings, it's the first grade.
37.625 would be 6.
That's what I meant, that's what I said. You just got me wrong.
I'm pretty sure I heard you right.
You can argue with the human calculus.
Like I said, 37.265.
I, I didn't mean it like, short and stat, or, maybe short to 10. Do you need us to re-heritate the motion again?
Your, your motion is to authorize staff to public notice of public hearings in a mill levies, total mill levy of 37.265, and a, uh, which would exceed the revenue neutral rate and hold, and public notice of the, uh, irregular 2025 budget public hearing to occur at 7:00 PM, Tuesday, September 3, 118 Main Goddard, Kansas, 67052.
You got all that, Mayor?
I'll make the motion that he just read.
You can say so moved.
So moved, thank you, so moved, second.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. I think we're good for the night. I guess the one thing I would maybe ask is, as you're working next week on adjusting the length of time on the.
I have a plan.
I know, I know, but the other side of that would be to maybe if we, if we didn't like the time, maybe give us some ideas of where you would pull funds from different accounts so that we could kind of look at all the different options.
Right, yeah, definitely.
Okay. Any other questions from that? I mean, we got down the weeds, I love this stuff, I don't know if some of you guys have just kind of went, if that's okay.
How many people would like to clear out, I can turn them back.
Yeah, there's more that we can do, so, go turn around, yeah. Aubrey, any questions?
No, I just got a statement, I encourage the public to come out here and participate in that. You know, Rob-
You know, we definitely want transparency, we also need participation, we need folks in here. We hear, we hear you out in the world, but we also, we hear you really, really clear, when you're here and talk to us directly. And so, the more participation we can get, I encourage that.
I presented every budget for the city since the budget of, the budget year 2012. Two people speak in public hearing, double the number of people that have spoken at public hearings in that one, so. Forty years.
Yeah, we love to see a full house, so tell your neighbors, you know, and help us get that word out.
Krista, any comments?
I appreciate you taking the time and for, to break down all three options for us, and just going through, it was time well wasted.
Brent, comments?
No, I don't have any comments at this time, we go to late nights.
That's fine.
Just echoing what Trailer said, or not Trailer, alright. Yeah, so I am echoing what Colin said, get here and get involved, we can't hear you on Facebook, so. I'm just being honest, 98 comments, it's too many for me to read, so come and just say it, please, because we do want you to be involved in this process.
My only comment is that if the county reduces their mill levy by 3.7%, we're basically asking people to forego that increase, and we'll shift that as part of our 6%, and the net increase is going to be 2.3 mills. That, I think, is reasonable, when we're in a situation where we're at with the growth, but we're not, you know, we're still listening, but I think we're kind of getting this narrowed down to where potentially we can do four, but six would be a tremendous increase, spending $800,000 a year for the next five years on streets, after all the years of inactivity is playing catch-up. But it's nice that the community is willing to step in and make the commitment to get it done, so.
Do you have any more questions for me for the night? I would like to get the documents updated, so we can get that sent out as soon as possible, so I'm going to go do that.
Very good. Matt, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, we're moving on, down the road here.
Good evening, and City Council. This ordinance is for consideration for exempting the library from prohibited from eating and from consumption of alcohol on public property. The library wishes to host events to raise awareness of library activities and to promote opportunities for community engagement. Since the library wishes to host these types of events on a reoccurring basis, the proposed ordinance will allow the Goddard Public Library, which operates on property owned by the city, located at 201 North Main Street, Goddard, to host private events at the library during which it intends to serve complimentary alcohol to the city. Currently, the code of the city generally prohibits consumption of alcohol on public property. However, KSA 41719 allows the city to exempt its own property from the prohibitions on the possession and consumption of alcohol on public property. There is a small publication entity associated with the publication of the ordinance in the Times Sentinel newspaper, the official paper of the record, and the ordinance was drafted by the city attorney-in-law. The recommendation is to waive the reading of the ordinance with a boys' vote and adopt consent ordinance for roll call vote. Do you have any questions?
So, I, because we don't see any issues.
I mean, no, in the sense that the library still has to comply with all of the other liquor laws, you know, and this is a deal where it's got to be by invite only, these aren't events that can be just open to the general public, so people need to sign up and, and get on the invite list. If, if you're expecting that you can just show up at the door, that's not going to be permissible, based on my understanding of liquor laws. And so, what we are doing here is just simply amending our ordinance to allow these events to happen. There's still the expectation and the requirement that the library is going to have to comply with all of the other agencies, various liquor laws, so.
So, the question at hand is that there's a liquor law violation, there are a lot of different rules, I have a liquor license, but if there's a violation, where does that liability stand?
It would be with the library. The library is a separate board from the city.
Fair enough. I just recommend we get ABC involved and, and either give a counseling or workshop on how to do these things, because there's a lot of laws there, it could be, you know, pretty touchy. Alright, so, if only we do our due diligence in that, I'll see any issue.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion, we waive the reading of the ordinance.
I'll second.
Make the motion. Keep each to it. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make the motion about the ordinance.
Make the motion that we adopted ordinance.
Who makes the motion?
I'll second.
Aubrey seconds. Roll call vote.
Council member, yes. Council member, yes. Mary.
Yes, with the caveat of what Aubrey mentioned about them doing the due diligence and make sure that, because those laws are archaic and very unique to you.
Can we please make the motion?
Yes. No, I'm going to change the motion.
Make the motion that we made it, like, off.
Was you stating that the city staff would counsel them, or did that?
No, no, no.
The recommendation is that.
They would get.
This is just adopting the ordinance.
You're adopting the ordinance.
Voting the ordinance?
Yeah.
Or you're voting against the ordinance?
We're voting for it.
Not for any conditions.
There we go, perfect, that's what we're doing.
And, but just, this is advice from the best to the library, asking them to.
I mean, I, I'm just going to put it this way. If you have concerns about the library's ability to comply, then you probably shouldn't vote for us.
I have confidence in the library, and I think.
I have confidence.
But it's just really complicated, and just, we're just asking to be careful. It's like when you send your kids out, you know, and they take them a new car for a ride around the block.
Look, look, please, so you cross the street.
Just be careful. Alright. So we're, yes.
And councilor, are you in?
Yes.
Terry, I apologize for this.
That'll be the ordinance, 972.
Round the table? Kristen, city administrator, Ryan Trapp, alright.
Yes, let's talk trash.
Let's be nice, let's, let's be nice. No trash talking in this room, I.
Alright, alright. Good evening once again. As you'll recall, earlier this year, there was a goal-setting session between council and staff, and one of those goals focused on looking at moving from the open market system that we have now, into a single hauler for solid waste or trash and recycling services throughout the city of Goddard. And so, working with our legal council, we put together the timeline for adopting this. Currently, just for information, there are four active haulers operating in Goddard at this time, and so, we have developed a timeline for moving to this service should council decide to do that. Again, this is a multi-step process that has been set forth by state statutes, and so, thanks to legal council for helping us put together this timeline, we really do feel that as we are looking at, as we are increasing water rates, as we're increasing property taxes, that looking for ways to save our residents and businesses money, that's part of our due diligence as well, as staff and council. And so, looking at moving to a single hauler system certainly does have certain benefits. This is listed here on the analysis, so looking at increasing the economies of scale rather than having the city divided between four different haulers, we've moved into a single hauler. And again, with increasing that economy scale, looking to create a cost savings for many of, many of the users. The next one is a big one for us to consider, as we are looking at making significant investments in our existing infrastructure, especially our streets. Moving to a single hauler system will reduce the number of routes, as well as the trash and recycling vehicles that are traversing on those roads. So, by doing that, will reduce the amount of wear and tear and further investments that we have to make on these streets. Looking at the environment, by reducing the number of trucks, we can reduce the noise and air pollution. And then lastly, everyone would be using the same bin, everybody on the same system. Looking at the timeline, this is next on, I, this is very small, even on that large screen, so I referenced the timeline that has been published in the agenda packet. What we are looking at is, again, a multi-year process, and we are on phase one tonight, so tonight being August 19, 2024. Looking at, considering a single hauler system, the ask of council tonight is to, and this is on the next slide, but our next step is to publish a public notice with a public hearing that would take place on October 7, to review a proposed resolution of intent. And so, this would be, tonight would be requesting that, and then hold, pulling the public hearing on the 7th of October. Moving from there, if the ROI is adopted, then we would work on developing a plan for trash recycling services. That plan would be, along with that plan, we would also create RFP that would go out to our current haulers, as well as other haulers, and publish it to the general market, to allow people to, or haulers to present proposals for how they would serve the community. So again, we are still maintaining open market, this is still a competitive bid process, to where city council would review those. This would be reviewed later in 2025, and based on the bids that are submitted, again, through the competitive RFP process, city council would approve a hauler, sign a contract, but again, due to state statute, the earliest that that selected hauler could begin service in the city of Goddard would be on October 19 of 2026. Now, the good thing about that is that it does give staff time to implement billing. How this would work, coming from Valley Center, we have a single hauler, they, that city does have a single hauler system. How that works is that a contract, once a bid, the competitive bid is selected, then staff and council would approve a contract, usually those are anywhere from three to five years, with rates for trash recycling, for both residential rates, commercial rates, we have a lot of different types of users in the community. And so, that, that RFP, that proposal would be comprehensive. Once we've accepted those bids and signed the contract, that gives that hauler enough time to prepare to begin service again in November of 2026, and then also gives time, because what would happen is rather than residents and commercial users paying the haulers directly, that would be added to the monthly utility bill. So there would be a separate line item for trash, and if, if residents and commercial users choose to do so, recycling as well, I don't think we would want to make recycling mandatory. But again, based on whatever service you do select, that would then be added to monthly utility bill, and then the city would pay the hauler from there based on monthly service. I can tell you, with Valley Center, we have a very robust relationship with our selected hauler. I know from the audience, from the residents' comments and feelings, there are concerns, but again, we, as a city, would work very closely on addressing issues as they arise, whether that is someone, their service gets missed that week, or a bin goes missing, and also looking at rate increases, those would all have to be approved by city council. The beauty of it is, is that the haulers, they, they can't issue the bills, that billing comes directly from the city, again, part of, being part of the monthly utility bill. But again, we are just on set one night, we've got a long way to go, there'll be a couple of public hearings, due to state statute, not only do we have to publish the public notices, public notices in the newspaper, we are also required to send those to the existing haulers as well. So they will be an active part of this conversation, we're not doing anything under the dark of night, everyone will be made aware of when these public hearings are held, and we give an opportunity to provide input into the implementation of the plan, and a review of the RFP would take place with city council as well, and the selection through, again, the competitive RFP process for selecting that single hauler. Again, I, this is the timeline that will make sure that we're an adherent to existing state statutes, and again, the item for, the action for tonight is simply to call public hearing, to be held on October 7, to review the proposed resolution of intent. And that will be included in the agenda packet, and again, a public notice, as you see here, will be published on August 29, to fulfill this timeline.
Brent, do you want to mention some of your comments on this?
Oh, yeah, Jeffrey Jones, where is he, is he out there? He left. I play the same as Jeffrey Jones.
And why is that?
Because our entire neighborhood uses it. Uses one base connection.
So, a portion of the community has a. Already has kind of a designated.
It's like, yeah, it's like $39.
Through, through your home neighborhood.
Yes.
Hey, Lee, I want to, I want to jump on the tail end of that. If, if the HOA is able to get a competitive rate due to economies of scale, because the bill is equitable to the entire neighborhood.
Really, the HOA? It was just like, I think we just all, everybody just did it.
One sec, let me finish my, my comment here. If the, if the neighborhood itself's getting a competitive rate, because everyone's pooled together, the whole theory behind this is if we pool the whole city together, the economies of scale are huge, so we should be able to get a really competitive rate, and that's what we're seeing in the other cities that are doing this.
So is it going to be lower than that?
Some residents, if you're paying.
Or is it going to go up?
Hold on. If you're, I can answer that with certainty, two years away from the time that we would bid this, and please also keep in mind, we can pull the plug anytime along the way. All that being said, if the math maths rights, we should be paying less, because we have economies of scale. Now, if you live in a certain neighborhood, and for some reason, they're getting some crazy deal, maybe there's someone on the HOA board that works for one of the, I, I can't speak to any of that, but we, we're making decisions based off the collective interest of the community, so there might be a little pocket that is getting the best deal in Sedgwick County that pays a few extra bucks a month. If we can bring everyone else's rates down by 10, 20, 30, 40, sounds like in some cases over 50%, that serves the collective interest of the entire community, and that's what we're here to make decisions based on. So, that's kind of the lens that, that staff's looking to get this from, and I also think we have a little more ability to hold the providers accountable if it's, if the city isn't part of that process. So, I understand the free-market principle, I think that there are some, that is also incorporated into this, when they are competitively bidding to win our contract.
And the length of the time, just generally, would be like a five-year interval?
I think you'd want to go no less than three, no more than five, that way if there are issues, you can make changes without having to wait forever for the contract being.
And as we walk down the path of this and get to the point where we even took the bids and we weren't happy with the bids, we don't have to do anything.
Exactly.
And we'll just keep doing what we're doing?
Yep.
And I'm taking my trash over to Brent's house, I'm not paying anybody any attention, just paying it, so. No, good, good point.
It's a good point, and there, there could be, and likely will be, a pocket of residents that, who are now paying the cheapest rates, I've heard some as low as $10 a month in a couple of our subdivisions, they may end up paying a few bucks more. But we got to look at the collective interest, and if we can bring everyone's bills down, or at least the supermajority, it's worth our while to go through this exercise.
Keaton, you have anything?
I mean, I guess, I'm okay with us looking at the options, just being honest, right now, I'm not entirely in favor of it. I don't know that the government body needs their hands in this particular cookie jar, in my opinion, but I'm definitely willing to look at it and just see, because like the mayor said, we can pull the plug at any time, we're not, we're not agreeing to anything, we're not signing any contracts, we're just looking at, hey, what would this look like? Which I think is smart, as a community, to just look and say, hey, what would that do? Would that, would that be beneficial? And if we get down the road and we see any, any hiccup that, that could come, we pull the plug. But, I'm just trying to be transparent, so many I'll feel blindsided when I'm against it a year from now. Right now, I don't know that personally, I don't think the government needs to be involved in everything, and this is one of those things, in my opinion, but I'm willing to, I'm willing to kind of hear out the process, so that's where I'm at.
Aubrey, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I mean, I'm all about looking, I'm, I'm, I'm going to encourage the public hearing, because I love to see the different aspects of that, some people are experiencing it, I mean, you guys, hopefully you all experienced it, weigh the pros and cons. I mean, you guys, hopefully you all experienced it, weigh the pros and cons, what could go wrong, you know what I mean? Definitely want to look at that. But here are a lot of different yay and nay from the public since they learned about this. And so, public hearing, I encourage that to happen. And again, mass participation is better.
Krista, you want to comment, any thoughts?
Well, I'm, I'm for free and advised all the way. And that's, it's valuable to me, because I'm a small business owner, so I understand from that perspective. I would be very interested to see how our community responds, and what, what people are wanting to say about it. So we just go through the process and see how, just see how it goes.
I want to take a motion to start the vulnerable on this.
I make a motion, call for a public hearing to be held on October 7th of 2024, to review the proposed resolution of intent.
Aubrey's made the motion, that's second. I'll second it. Any other discussions? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's do a roll call. Is everybody's really calling here?
Councilmember Hall?
It's just a public hearing.
Councilmember Fish?
What's your comment, George Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Hayden?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Traynor?
Aye.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Just a public hearing?
Just a public hearing.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, appreciate it. Item seven, adjusted change water ordinance.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item J.7, the new water rate ordinance. A little background here, on August 5th, 2024, the governing body laid out a plan to address concerns related to the water utility and the proposed rate increases. Specifically, this plan included suspending the rate changes to the November 1st bill, adopting a new water rate ordinance with a six-month reduction in unit charge for the two highest tiers, and the appointment of an ad hoc water committee. I mentioned a little bit about the committee earlier, so I will save you, but just take a look here, kind of a brief summary of what the purpose of that will be. We are pretty excited to get that group together. When folks are willing to engage, we really appreciate that. We spend a lot of time doing what we do, and often do we get a high level of engagement. So it's actually a little refreshing to, to have folks reaching out and wanting to be a part of this process. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider approving the new water ordinance referenced above and seen attached in exhibit B of your packet. Again, the difference between the new water ordinance and ordinance 967, which was approved at the last council meeting, is a six-month temporary reduction in the pre-unit charge for the two highest tiers. And after six months, the pre-unit charges for the two highest tiers would increase to the original amount approved in ordinance 967. Here, I include a water rate schedule that my colleague Brooke Carroll, our U Chief Financial Officer, put together. You can see what the estimated monthly impact would be, based on your amount of usage. I also put this bottom table here, that my colleague Utility Billing Clerk Kayla Corgi put together for us. And it shows just how many of our in-city residential users fall within each of these tiers. So you'll see the 12-month average there in the far, far right, about 21% of our citizens are under that minimum 2,000 gallons, so a relatively small impact to their monthly bill. Then you look at the next tier here, about 28% are within that category. You can see, if you follow along with the table above, an escalation in the increased liability on the monthly bill. And then, if you fall in the top two tiers, which 32% and 18.5% on average respectfully fall within that, those two categories, you're going to have a pretty significant impact. And that's purposeful. Water is a precious resource, and if you're going to be utilizing those larger amounts, you're going to have to pay a little more to do that. So we have been spending a lot of time on this process. This is very much so a data-driven decision. We want to make you guys well-informed on all the different variables. This conversation didn't start in the July council meeting. This conversation has been ongoing publicly for several months. There's various modes with, and methods with which we engage with our community. I'm sure that we fall short, and, and there's some, some opportunities to do better. I would encourage our citizens to, to help us in the way we communicate, and tell us what ways they might better receive information. We utilize Time Sentinel, our social media pages, of course, we stream our meetings. We have our agenda packet distribution list, we have the Goddard Glance, so we're using snail mail. Aside from radio and TV, you know, we're, we're hitting all the different avenues. So perhaps maybe it's a quantity issue, we need to do more of it. Without a full-time public information officer, that's something that we all kind of share as a city staff. So we reallocate our attention based on the level of engagement the citizens request of us. So in this particular circumstance, we start out with our standard. As folks show a heightened level of, of input and wanting to be involved in the situation, so too do we turn the dial up on our engagement. I hope folks have seen that over the last few weeks, as we continue to process this issue. So with that, I would be glad to take any questions from the DIAS, and also I put forth this recommendation here for your consideration.
I would make one additional comment. As a part of that process of the ad hoc committee, when we get to the end of March of next year, we will review this ordinance. And depending on their findings, we can easily change it again. But part of the rate increase going forward, we, like I said, from the last two minutes to fourth quarter, that kind of puts the, the onus on that ad hoc committee to come back with their recommendations, and then we'll review the ordinance again at the end of March. So with their input, whether we end up billing a lot of treatment plan, or we don't, whether we tie into Wichita, which probably the smartest thing to do, but we're going to look at every option. We're going to explore all the possibilities. But basically what we're doing in approving this tonight is setting it in motion with the understanding that in March of 2025, we will review this, and, and based on the data collected, we'll make our decision and move forward. So I just wanted to be sure we were a part of the deal, so.
Mayor, I'd just add that the ordinance is written, it will automatically increase to the rates for those two highest tiers as approved in ordinance 967. Of course, as you said, that doesn't mitigate us from reviewing and re-potifying the water rates once again.
Right, and I think that, that's basically the intent of this, is to set the process in motion, and we're committing, basically when I was talking about this two weeks ago, that we'll do the review, and we'll, we'll look at it again, and, and whatever changes of things are recommended from the committee and the camp, and our, and our staff, and what we all think, going forward, we'll, we'll set it. That there's the opportunity now to actually do something about water quality, and this gives us the time to do it. We're going into the season where people are going to be using eight, eight thousand gallons of water, to a lot of their best view in some cases. And hopefully, if you look at the usage chart, when you get into November, December, the number of people that use under 5,000 gallons goes up above 60% unbelievably. But anyway, but I just want to be sure you mentioned this.
To add too, is that we have to do something, right? This isn't an option in the world we just forget about. You know, we have to do something, because we have to look forward 20-year number, 25-year number. So I just wanted to add that comment.
Any other comments, Krista? Keaton? Okay, here we go. Make a motion that we waive the revision of the right ordinance. The motion is second, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two.
Make a motion to approve the water rate ordinance 2.0 attached in exhibit B.
Second.
I second.
Krista, seconds, roll call.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Traynor?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Biggie Ordinance 973.
Thank you. Good job there.
Thank you.
All right, so let's say the best for last. That's right. Mr. Brooke here.
Okay, so J, the 2024 Road Projects Change Order Number Three. Bear with me, this is a word, I wanted to make sure the history was very clear in how we got to this point. At the mid-8 2024 City Council meeting, the council approved the 2024 Street Bid and Work Pearson Construction. The approved bid covered full-depth reconstruction, a heavy mill and overlay of the North Front Road. It's also included the full rebuild of Second Street from Walnut to Goddard Road, and up grade from gravel to asphalt on Second Street from Main Street to Goddard Road, and the mill and overlay 27 circle in the seasoned subdivision. Pearson Construction's bid was lower than the engineer's estimate for these projects, allowing for the additional, the addition of a mill and overlay of Walnut Street from the Trail South to 23rd Street, and mill and overlay of North and South Main Streets to add to the project. As the project progressed, city staff discovered that the road subgrade on all of Second Street and the south end of Walnut Street was unstable. Subgrade stability often cannot be determined until roads open, at which point heavy equipment is used to assess the surface, the surface condition. Due to this instability, additional rock was needed to stabilize specific areas. Consequently, the planned known and overlay of Second Street was upgraded to a full-depth restoration. Given these experiences with Second Street, Walnut Street, staff chose to modify the scope of work on First Street from the mill and overlay to a full-depth reconstruction, ensuring the total product is of quality or of proper standards. The addition, the additional costs associated with the complete full-depth reconstruction of all of Second Street, First Street, and South Walnut Street required the $1,699,383 that was the original Pearson bid to be reallocated between projects. The original plans to mill and overlay North and South Main Street was vacated, and the scope of First Street was reduced from a mill and overlay from Goddard Road to Walnut Street, to a full-depth reconstruction from Main Street to Walnut Street, and we will be the, the portion from Main Street to Goddard Road until a future year. The total construction cost of Pearson projects was $1,699, as I said earlier. Breakdown of the cost is as follows. Dark fee bid for the North Front Road side road was a minimum one. The project addition, project additions were just over $500,000 for the total of that $1,699,000. The change of full-depth reconstruction of First Street required additional subgrade rock expenses not accounted for in the original contract. On the North Front Road, the core condition of several parking lots required additional concrete removal or replacement to reach good concrete to tie into the approaches. So essentially there, when we cut out the approaches, if they had a, a bad spot in an parking lot, we didn't want to tie to that, so we created a hovel right at the end of the concrete. So the contractor went a little further in, until they got a good place to tie into their concrete. Which also increased, increased the cost beyond the original contract. Here's a couple maps. This was the original scope of First Street. We are taking this portion off of Main to Walnut, as I said earlier, to Goddard Road, as I said earlier, and we're going to do that in a future year. This year, instead of the mill and overlay here, we're going to do a full-depth reconstruction from Main Street on the Walnut. Very similar to what was done on Second Street, almost the exact same thing as Second Street. And then on the North Front Road, it's kind of small to see here, but these little, little approaches here, knowing in all the businesses like Russ's, as I said, various states of parking lots in different, and they were in different conditions, required us to move a little bit more in, or the contractor to cut a little more out and add a little more concrete that originally planned. Project costs are detailed here. The Pearson costs, including change order number three, are $1,710,394.24. As I said before, the original contract was $1,699,336. The project cost of the original contract is $11,000, excuse me, $10.67. The change order of that $11,000, $10.67 will be paid from capital improvement, streets, capillary improvements. Questions? Comments?
Did they not go out on the job and, and look at this stuff and see it in the driveways? I mean, when they bid the job?
Well, I think that was something that probably shouldn't have gone out upfront. Really normally on that, you go to the, to the roadway line, and that's what the city owns. We moved a little bit beyond the roadway line here to provide a good product to these businesses, instead of leaving them with an issue. And, and yes, we could have, we could have gone out and looked. Still, it's standard to go to the roadway line. And Harlan, you can add it here if you, if you'd like.
Yeah, we, we made the assumption, the intent was stop at the roadway line.
Which is standard, correct?
Yes.
And so, we're, we're giving them a little extra concrete here, because we don't want to create a problem where our good concrete tied into a better, that's a, a lesser quality parking lot. We don't want to cause a problem by creating a new, a new approach.
It's just another item where doing something the right way and doing the right thing.
Correct.
That's why you do stuff like that.
And this, this is, a lot of these changes, we didn't know about until we got those roads open, starting there. Until we got those roads open. And as the mayor said earlier in his comments, if we, we could have just put a mill and overlay on that, and five years in, then break it up, we'd have soft rocks, and it, it would have been an absolute waste of money.
So this is a, after the fact change order, or, you know what I'm saying? Is it after the fact change order? Because they usually give you a change order right before.
Well, as, as these projects go, a lot of times, if your, if your quantities of your materials change, like the raw concrete or whatever, or we find issues that
I always have to get a change order approved before, I have to structure to send another bid.
Normally construction, Matt, you mentioned the process, if you can add to that part of it.
I will, specifically related to the driveway. The work on First Street has not been done, so.
Correct.
Yeah, as, as regarded to the driveway, there was, there was approximately 750 square yards bid, bid into the project. We, we've used up about 480 square yards of that now.
In phase one?
But moving into phase two, we've reevaluated the driveways, and some of this, we're going to, we think we're going to go over that planned quantity. So no, that work, we haven't exceeded the planned quantity yet, but we believe we're going to exceed that. So we're getting this approval ahead of time.
Oh, okay, that's interesting.
Phase two and three, the drives have not been done.
Does that sound better?
Yeah, they have not been done. So yes, the work has not been done.
Okay.
So have we looked at making sure this isn't going to happen when we get to phase three? Because we've got Parkway Church right there, we've got a pull-off, you get what I'm saying?
The Parkway's has been done. That was the very first thing done, and what was done, that was a mill and overlay, because that's an asphalt road and it was in pretty good shape. So that was the very, actually, very first phase of this. So we're kind of in phase three now. This is the final phase of the, of, of, we're calling it phase two, because it's phase two of the length of the concrete, but it's really kind of phase three of the project.
Okay. That's what, make sure we're not going to run into this in a few weeks.
We, we shouldn't, on the new front of the road, I mean, knock on wood, of course, I'm crazy, but we shouldn't have to cover anything else. I don't think so, do you, Harlan?
Well, until we get the pavement off of all, the whole stretch, we don't know for a fact, you know, that we might not have to increase some rock, or increase some subgrade work, so that's the one caveat.
Talking to the, to the contractor today, the, the, below the rock and the pavement on this first part that turned out, it's significantly different soil than it was on the last phase. It's less, less clay, it's easier to work with, and it should take less time, hopefully, to continue on to the east like that.
Any other questions? Someone make a motion, I'm going to hold.
I make the motion to approve the change order number three with Pearson Construction. Foreign amount not to exceed $11,000.16.
Second.
Just makes a motion, Aubrey, second, so those favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, appreciate it. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to ready to chair up, you look a little short.
This thing keeps changing.
This thing keeps shrinking. I'm a tricky mayor.
We've been taking it short and short.
I think I table on Branson that goes up and down like...
But the thing is, if I drop a little law, I can go ahead and fall asleep and nobody's going to know. Thank you, appreciate that.
Honorable Mayor, Council, just a few updates here on the city operations and future items. We talked a little bit about the health insurance program during budget, so I won't get too much into that. But the highlight here is that we've had another annual increase, this time about 15%. Staff's original plan was to absorb that amongst the employee and employer contribution. It sounds like the governing body may have a different path, which we are more than willing to pursue. One of the other things that we are working through is collaborating with Freedom Plan Management E. It's a third-party health insurance administrator. They have 40 or 50 municipal clients here in the state of Kansas, and they, it's a little bit complicated to get into during the city administrator's report, but they will be here on Tuesday, August 27th, for our new council meeting, to kind of walk you through how that program works. But essentially, you have what's called a high deductible plan, which reduces the cost of premiums. You are able to draw on a fund that we set aside into account, and that fund builds the cost savings that we receive because most of our employees are not going to hit that high deductible. Typically, you couldn't get a plan like most places have, you're just throwing that money away. So we'll get into that more. I've worked in this program, an organization like this one, for about three years, a great success. There's plenty of other municipal clients that they have in Kansas that are here. I'll just, for them, you guys will be the leaders of that group that are next council meeting to share with you more about that. The purpose is, we're trying to mitigate these annual increases while maintaining the same level of benefit for our employees. It's very important to us in our ability to recruit and attract talent to do government. The facilities assessment proposal is part of our 10-year CIP. We need to get our facilities assessment in order. Data prioritizing and planning necessary facility improvements and expansions. I don't know if you noticed, but there's not a single office space left here in City Hall. PD side is jam-packed as well. We've got a, I don't know, 60-year-old pole barn that we're using for a public works facility that has a lot of lights going on, a bit that needs replaced. We're through the library addition for consideration. I don't know if you've been out there for storytime, but it's pretty packed. As we look at our city's growth year over year, we're outpacing our facilities. HUD will help us prioritize how to address that situation. They'll come in and look at all our buildings, and how we're utilizing them, and give us some proposed options to look at, facility improvements or additions throughout our 10-year CIP. This is very early in that process.
And this is really setting the roadmap and establishing a plan that, what else you were talking about, what we're working on?
Yes, our 10-year CIP, we're really working hard on that. You know, in the back pages, I guess, you're not really seeing that that's going on, but we've been working hard with consultants to put that together. It's very part of our planning. The roadway project, Second Street base asphalt was completed August 14th. After demolition, as we're completed on North Frontage, the grade crew will come back the second, finish cutting the ditches the week of the 19th, and then the surface asphalt will be placed the week of the 26th. The asphalt cap on the Prairie Sunset Trail is complete, looks terrific. Stormwater system GIS mapping, KWA will be in town this week to map the Old Town area stormwater sewer system. We don't run GIS data for Old Town. All of our new developments that are like 15, 20 years older and newer, if I said that right, we've got GIS for all that stuff because it's a requirement of the planning process, but we did used to do that back in the day, so we don't have it for Old Town. KWA's coming in at a really good rate to help us map that system so we can finalize, put together our stormwater improvement program. Meteor Park lighting project, Everdies began the staking. You've probably seen some of the stakes out there. And so, we're hoping to see that work start up soon. We'll try to give the community a few days' notice. The Skada project, this is a huge capital project. Now, we're talking three-quarter million dollar plus type of venture. You can see where we're at in putting together our F P here. I won't get too deep into the lapse of upcoming council action. One eighth of their turn lanes, you got your written update there. Senior mills, same story as last council meeting, we're hoping to start up October 1. Meteor Park playground, Brooke will be bringing that to council Tuesday, September 3. We've been tabling that for several months now. I believe he's finally been able to get another bid. We had a hard time getting the companies to want to submit a bid on this. A lot of them work together, so that made it more difficult. Harlan's team is designing the rural water district four cross connection. I'd like to see that as a 2025 construction project. Budget workshop, I'm just going to skip to that last, these last couple sentences here. Tuesday, September 3, we'll have a regular budget hearing, the revenue tour rate hearings. If necessary, the budget can be workshop during the preceding three or four meetings. After Tuesday, September 3, we can work all the way until October 1st, 2024 to certify the budget. So we've got a couple of items out there that we're still unsure on. We can still take the time between September 3 and October 1 to clear those out. We just can't exceed the six mills that you guys approved to be published. Hopefully, that's clear. So I need to talk to you more about it, call me this week. Goddard North Park, we've been working really hard on engaging with the community on that one. There's an update here as far as where we're at in that process, but the governing body should have some action on that in November. The monument entry signage, the bids were received, they're looking really cool. Staff will deliver a recommendation to the governing body during the Tuesday, August 27 council meeting. We're working on the Goddard Park master plan. That's necessary for the LWCF grant that we are applying for, for the North Park project. Last but not least, I want to extend a thank you to the Chamber of Commerce Board and the President and CEO, Engie, along with the many members of the planning committee, which includes several of our police officers, as far as their job in putting together a wonderful national night out event. And specifically to the Chamber Board and the President and CEO, thank you for your work on the Main Street market. So that was another good iteration of that event, and I think that really adds to our community's quality of life in small town to be able to have those events. So that's all I got. Any questions?
No, thank you. Maybe, thank you. Let's just skip. Governing body comments in the executive session?
Mayor, if you'd like, and if the city attorney has a process with which he recommends following, staff would be comfortable with tabling these two executive sessions to the Tuesday, September 3 council meeting.
You know, it's the addition of 60 minutes, we do that.
That one's Tuesday, September 3.
Oh, you're talking about 3.
Yeah, it's just on a Tuesday because of Labor Day.
Yeah, no, okay, I'm just thinking.
I'll be here.
I'll make a motion to table these two executive sessions.
Second. We have a motion to table the executive sessions, and Aubrey made the motion, Pete, second. So all those favor say aye.
Aye.
And we move those to Tuesday, September, whatever the day is, 3.
We're fixing to turn the pump, it's going to get out of here.
And we'll just, anyway, you really want to say anything for good, or good, Pete, you want to say anything? I know you're out, you're already good. We'll just move that we adjourned, have a motion to... A motion to adjourn. All those favor say aye, go home. Thank you for your...